Michael, can you hear me?
Thank you. Tuesday, April eighth, eleven A M. And we'll call our work session to order. We'll begin with a roll call, starting with Councilmember Bogdan.
Becky Bogdan.
Gary Garrett.
Greg Christensen.
Catrice McKay.
Thank you. Others I know are expecting to join us shortly. And we excuse the administration for the duration of meetings today who are on an economic visit back east. And we're joined by Councilmember Whipple also. Although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those invited may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait until called on. When speaking, be sure to use the microphone so the record is clear and those attending can hear you virtually. It's proposed that we approve the following minutes, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five work meeting and February eleventh, the twenty twenty five council meeting. Are there any changes to those minutes? I did want to recommend one change, Michael, on page. Let's see. This is page thirty four, which is line nine twenty seven of the draft minutes. Counselor Hoben made a motion that you see there, and there's no second mention. It goes all the way until we vote on the actual motion itself. So maybe just review the minutes, the audio, and see what we're missing there in terms of a second to Counselor Hoben's substitute motion. Great, thank you.
There's not a second when you say it was not seconded in the minutes? Because I believe the vote would have been on the implied motion then.
I think you're right. I think you're right. In fact, I don't think there was a second.
Yeah.
So then, that's why there isn't.
Right.
Okay, so no amendment necessary. Okay, right?
But is that a helpful thing to put in the minutes?
You could do that. You could add that there was no second.
Yeah, probably is helpful to understand that.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you, Brian. Any other objections or requested changes to these minutes? If not, we'll declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent. We're joined also by Counselor Handley. Welcome, George. First, we have a discussion regarding the proposed repeal of Provo City Code, Chapter nine point four one. This will be presented by Brian Jones and Bob Trombley. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the council. This item is not too controversial, I hope. Provo City Code nine point four one is a section of code where the city adopted by ordinance a previous version of the Utah Alcohol Vet Ridge Control Act. The previous version of the act, which was codified in state code at thirty two alpha, required that municipalities adopt it formally prior to enforcing its provisions. So we're talking about drinking alcohol in public or sale of alcohol to minors, that sort of thing. The previous version was repealed, revised, and re-encoded as thirty two Bravo some years ago. So today's request is just a sort of cleanup action. This new version of Utah State Code thirty two Bravo does not require municipalities to formally adopt it prior to enforcing it. And in fact, Chapter four of the new state code imposes the duty upon us to enforce it even without the adoption. So this will just be to clean up the city code.
All right, any questions for Bob?
No, but in reading it, I've got other questions that I'll give to Brian on different parts of the code. So more of that later.
So the recommendation is to clean up the reference there.
I just deleted entire chapter.
Okay. This is required of both.
Well, it will.
It'll come to an evening meeting. This is just your first read introduction.
Okay.
Two weeks.
Okay. Any questions or clarifications? Becky?
Brian, do we have any really obscure stuff in code, like wagon can't be parked? So are we cleaning that up as well?
We are. It's slow going because it's proactive and there's so much reactive stuff going on, but we do actually have a project ongoing in the legal office right now, where we have some interns that are starting at the very beginning of the code and going through and trying to apply the style guide to it. That has been slow going. I'm hoping I can make it a little faster. I've actually been experimenting the last couple of weeks with writing my own G P T where I will upload the style guide to the G P T and then process each chapter by having the A I apply the style guide to it. So that's gotten somewhat derailed because I have to do the same thing to the new zoning code first before I go, because it's more urgent than everything else. So I'm going to work on doing that with the zoning code first as it comes to you. So you probably won't see other cleanup changes to the rest of the code till after the zoning code's done, just because of the priorities. But that is in the plan.
So we won't have horses parking on Center Street or wagon that turn around someplace. Okay.
We'll try to work on some stuff. There are some very old provisions. I think I emailed you about one not too long ago about temp agencies not being illegal for temp agencies to send women to work at houses of ill repute.
Yeah.
Apparently not to send men, so I. So there are some stuff like that in the code that we need to clean up.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you again, Bob.
Thank you.
Forward to seeing this item on a council agenda soon. Next, we have the Public Works Budget Presentation for Fiscal Year twenty twenty six, presented to us this morning by Jimmy McKnight.
First start with Water Resources Division. So the Water Resource Division is the Division Director is Jerry Calder and includes the water fund and wastewater fund. These two funds are utility revenues that we handle operating divisions and for sections. And then we also fund our C I P through these. As a big picture overview, we bring about nineteen point two million revenue on the water fund currently. Which is split between the three sections. If we talk about the water fund later, this discussion will continue as we talk about the overall funding available and how it's divided. But in all of our utilities we'll discuss today, we fund both C I P and operating from the various sources. Wastewater Fund, we have twenty six point seven million split between collections and reclamation, which is wastewater to the treatment plant and treats it. C I P.
I was asked this question, and you can email me the answer later if you want to, but I have a constituent that wants to know how much the A S R project costs, the one that goes up Rock Canyon. And if we are seeing any what results we're seeing.
Jimmy, I've got another quick question. Sorry. On the Public Works and Water Administration. So from our last leadership meeting, I was given the impression that water was also paying for some administrative roles in other public work departments. So this number is, this is just public? Is this including all of those that have since been kind of changed in the water rate ask? Okay, so this is an updated number after that exam? No, this is not the updated one. Okay.
I guess right now the Public Works Admin includes Public Works Director, with my positions, and through the positions that cover all, you know, the funds that we want to talk about today. And part of the water special, we have leaders, some of the ways that we're correcting that to make
Right, so some of that five point eight million is going to be moved into other public works departments? Okay. Thank you.
When that different point is reached where that should make sense to be a city employee instead of a consultant, but we just have, you know, the projects vary from year to year on you know, whether it's wastewater or water, which when those, when that skate integration specialist is utilized, so I think that's an ongoing review that we need to do and watch to see how the spending for that technology implementation is applied and whether it's better to do that as a full-time employee or not. I think it feels kind of like a big step to make it a full-time employee. It feels more of a permanent thing, and we want to make sure that we do that at the right time when we know we have a consistent integration that's needed, so. And I guess that, I would mention that's also used in stormwater because we have pumps in stormwater as well, so we just have so many areas in public works where that is utilized that at some point it would probably make sense to make that a full-time employee.
So what you're saying is Gordon has commitment issues?
No. No, we just, we're just, I think, I think on all of these, it's a matter of timing and balance, and I'll go through those. I guess you'll continue to see that. So the next is the Water Sources. We had a request to add two full-time employees, one as a treatment plant supervisor and one as a sources manager. And again, this is, I think, a timing issue where we have a drinking water plant that will be coming online in about a year and a half. And so this is an effort to get that on everyone's radar that this, you know, we will need positions to run that plant. I guess the question was was F Y twenty five too soon to have that start? At some, you know, we have existing employees who are helping manage the construction of that plant and being involved in in what's going to take to run that plant, but at some point we will, we will need that. And some plant operators, so we haven't pulled that trigger yet, but that will be forthcoming. And again, a matter of balance and times. And Water Distribution, we had a request to add two part-time positions for water meter installations. We've, we're making a big push to install to replace all the old compound meters, which are typically the large meters that as they age, they they tend to lose accuracy, and we want to make sure on those, those, those big meters that we're getting accurate results. So but again, we have a balance. We're funding operating and capital, and we use that capital to buy the meters, so we continue to do that, but if we find, the more employees we fund, the fewer meters we can fund, so we are continuing with that. We're just trying to find that right balance of how fast we can get the meters installed and with how many employees, so the work is being done. On the wastewater fund, we had a supplemental to convert two part-time positions to a full-time operator. And again, this was a matter of timing, and you'll see on a future slide, we ended up doing this mid-year. And I'll talk about that when we get to that. Oh, sorry, that was the next one. The next one is the full-time lab tech that we funded through appropriation. So again, yeah, I mean, when we, when we deal with part-time positions, there's, we have to find the balance again between when there's enough work for a full-time employee and we've held off on that for now in wastewater. I think we'll probably be getting to that lab tech here in a slide or two. So we were asked to come back and one of the items we were asked to talk about was appropriations outside the budget. I think the earliest we came back was September, and for you at the time, we had just, you had just passed the budget in August because of the truth and taxation. So for you, I'm sure it felt really sudden to be changing the budget a month later, but for us, for us, we go through this budget process right now. You know, and so September, a lot changes for us between now and September, so hopefully, as I just discussed what we've done, you'll see maybe it doesn't, it won't seem as as soon after for you as it was for us, but in August, August, we sometime last year, we spent, or we we sold some property. We sold this part of the street between the temple and the the field where the M T C volleyball fields are and where our tanks are. And then we came back in August and asked to appropriate some of that revenue to for us to purchase some of the M T C property. There was some concern from the church and the M T C. And the temple organizations that those be done separately and when we initially intended for it to be kind of a property swap, but because of all the entities involved, we ended up separating those. And then we also did five, fifty thousand of that was to for service line improvements in Quill, in the Quill Valley H O A as we move to transfer that to city city infrastructure. And wastewater fund in September, we we came back and appropriated some money to fund one of our supplementals that we didn't, we didn't fund at the time. We didn't think that it was needed for the full year because we're our sewer treatment plant is coming online, was coming online mid F Y twenty five. So we held off in doing that in July, but we did, we did come back two months later and ask for that. So we saved, we saved two months of of a full-time position, but we were insured at the time exactly when we would need to make that transition. And then just last month, we appropriated thirty million dollars in bond revenue for the reclamation plant construction which I believe was two weeks ago, so. As far as supplemental requests in the current budget, we are asking for quarter eighty six thousand dollar increase to the operating budget for the reclamation plant. This is because in F Y twenty five, we we funded some of those improvements or some of that operation because we didn't have twelve months of the new plan in operation. But in F Y twenty six, we will have twelve months that we need to fund of of that, and the vast majority of that, three hundred fifty thousand of that is an increase to the electrical budget for the additional pumps that we'll be running. We also have some, some chemical costs and other impacts like that that we will need to spend to operate the plant, so. We feel it's a justified need for all twelve months. As far as fee changes, we have a few in each of these funds. As we went through a process to look at all the fees in, in Public Works, we looked at you know, cost recovery, we looked at other cities, we looked at you know, just what makes sense and what's changed from when these were last done. We've, we're proposing to increase the after-hours connect fee from seventy five to a hundred and fifty dollars when a water connection has to be disconnected after hours, we have to send someone from home out to go turn that back on. It takes our equipment time and our personnel time to do that. We have something you'll see in both water and wastewater reimbursement for mainline extensions. This is essentially when someone comes in and needs to extend a sewer line past other properties besides their own. Essentially, if they pioneer the line to their property, but then if others come in and connect to it, they get reimbursement for uprunning some of that money, and I don't think this happens very often, but we want to make sure that when it does happen that we have an appropriate cost. Essentially goes back to the, to the the developer who extends the line, so that's in both water and wastewater.
So Jimmy, on these, these are really big jobs. Is that because we hadn't looked at these and taken into account the whole cost for some time, or why are they, like, we're doubling our after-hours connect fee?
Yeah, so in some cases, it's, it's both the time it's been since we last did it, but also just the inflation we've seen very recently that has impacted the the overall cost, so.
And so the reimbursement is more because we know that they're paying more for that, and so it's it's fair both ways.
Yeah, and I think that's one that, because we don't use it very much, we haven't changed. That's one that hasn't changed in a very long time. So that is the reason for the large increase. There were some question about whether we should, when we discussed it, we talked about, do we even leave this in, but we want to make sure it's there because it happened, it's happened in the past and it could happen, but it's just so rare.
Yeah. What's a cross-connection patrol inspection?
So we have cross-connection devices that keep our clean water from being contaminated or from backflow coming into the clean water. So when a new, a new construction goes in, the cross-connection devices that have to be installed need to be inspected by our water crews to make sure they were installed correctly, because this is our clean water we need to 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 protect at all costs, and so, not all costs, I mean, we're talking fees, so.
Right, so before, that probably would have been checked, but it didn't have its own fee, would have been checked as part of the regular project?
Yes, and I'm not sure how how that's changed necessarily, but we feel like its own fee is justified. Any other comments on that, Gary?
Gary Calder. I'm a researcher here. Basically, the cross-connection is a new requirement from the state. Okay. And this is, for example, when the parts of complex being built, what this is, is the device, it's usually inside the building and the water exit of the city system going into the private system, there is that cross-connection to make sure that is installed properly. And then we also do inspections on that on an annual basis. cross-connection to make sure that is installed properly, and then we also do inspections on that on an annual basis. Okay, and we train people how to do that and get that training. If it's not done, actually, we send out our cross-connection person to make sure it's being done properly. Make sure that our water is not being contaminated.
When you say you train people, you mean city staff?
We we have a staff person that's involved, but because it's a private plumbing device, we try to train people to make sure that they hire somebody, making sure that person is trained properly so that we know that our report moving back is not. Okay, and there are sometimes, it's a new process, it's a real process of training, helping working to make sure that it's safe and careful.
Does the state also have reporting requirements for us to do?
First report that we submit to the state.
Thank you.
Uh another big change we've done, uh as we looked at how other um how other cities ran out fire hydrants, so this is what we do to, we ran out hydrants so that we can capture the water use of developers on a new property that doesn't have water installed yet, so they install it to a meter that's near there um to use for the construction project. Uh we we found that other other cities um most of them charge a deposit because the developer takes this meter with them and we don't want them to disappear, so the the cost of the meter is about nineteen hundred dollars, so we've made the deposit two thousand to to recover the cost of that if it gets taken and and they they get that back when when they bring it back. Um but then we're also uh increasing some of the penalties and and fees associated with the use of those meters. Um the no-read penalty, um we're we rely on them to 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 let us know, you know, we reach out to them every month, what's, what is your meter read uh this this month so that we can charge it for the water used and um sometimes it's hard to get get those results back, so um we want to make sure that we're we're keeping on top of the water they use and and doing it appropriately, just like we build the the water through everyone's meter. Um some of the key accomplishments, I won't go through all of these, but I'd love to, this is where uh I prefer to spend our time highlighting what we what we do and what we do well. A lot of these are um current projects that will, we anticipate to be done by the end of FY twenty five or or close to there. Uh so I don't think all of these are 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 done as of today, but um hopefully, this is a good representation of everything that's that's going on. And then here's the list for wastewater. Uh we've been asked to report on uh performance measures that we put in the budget. Um these, as as shown here, these are what I submitted with the budget a year of little less than a year ago. I do have uh updated numbers through March for most of these uh if if you're curious, but um a part of the the purpose of performance measures is to measure what we're doing and uh so we like to do that. Uh we 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 focus on what what our main purposes of of each of these funds are, and water, that's to to provide clean water. So one of the measures is is back to back to your geological samples taken. Uh so that's a state requirement as well to make sure that we're we're keeping the water clean. Um and then uh the water usage, um whatever the the demand is, we we supply, so uh we we measure that as well. Then in wastewater, uh the gallons of sewage treated is shown here by calendar year.
Jimmy, on that, okay, so these are calendar years, not fiscal years that we're talking about. But why is our our target lower now than it was for twenty twenty-three on the sewage treated? Like, had we exceeded the amount in twenty twenty-three and it was actually higher, or are we trying to reduce? Like, I I just don't understand why it's lower.
Yeah, so we um this is something we don't have a a lot of control about, um but the one part we can control that we've been targeting a lot is infiltration and and inflow. So um I'm not sure when we made the target that we were uh specifically looking at what twenty-three was, but we we are trying to target um groundwater that comes in that doesn't need to be treated, but makes its way into the sewer system. Uh so it's not necessarily um I don't know, if it looks good or bad that we're we're treating less, but for us, uh at least that component, we want we want to decrease.
So in a really wet water year, there would be more treated because there'd be more infiltration?
Yes. All right, so public services, so this is Shane Winters who's here, if you have questions, he's uh division director of public services, which includes streets, stormwater, sanitation and fleet. Um our streets operating budget, there isn't a a revenue source associated with the streets operating fund. Um they don't um we don't charge people for when we fill a pothole, but we we do have a revenue source of BNC funds that goes into the general fund and is used to fund streets operating. Um but we don't have any fees that we'll be adjusting associated with that operation.
Hmm.
Correct. Um it goes into maintenance, but it's typically more bigger bigger picture um projects where like we're re-reservicing an entire stretch of road rather than specific individual potholes, this is more of our, I mean, yeah, streets, they, you know, they do signs, they do um they do snow removal, uh they do a lot of other things, but um I I think I don't think we do a lot of potholing with the TUF mountains, it's more big big project and they're more targeted, so. Um stormwater fund is uh utility revenue that uh brings in about six point four million dollars, two point six of which goes to operations and three point eight to CIP. In the current budget, sanitation, we we have uh between the green, blue and black cans, about seven point three million in revenue. The vast majority of which goes to the pickup of those cans, it's not a CIP-intensive um operation or utility, but uh we do have some some vehicles are are main what could be considered capital expense in sanitation. And then uh vehicle maintenance is the our fleet operation that maintains all the city vehicles uh for all the other divisions of the city, all the other departments and for public works. And um we'll get into more details about that. We also, we also have a vehicle replacement fund that are um our fund where we purchase all the vehicles for the city, which we have a separate presentation on that um fund in two weeks, where we'll talk about uh the vehicles that are have been purchased and we're planning to purchase next year. Um in uh public services, our supplemental request last year uh were to add a full-time maintenance worker and twenty-five thousand dollar increase to the paint budget. Um we have um you'll see on the next slide, I think this in the stormwater, we did the same uh a maintenance worker request. So these are um these are positions or divisions that we have work work closely together, they're in the same uh same division. Um question again of of timing of of adding employees is always, you know, tricky, but um we feel like we're doing the work that needs to be done by by combining those resources and uh having them help each other and work together. As far as the paint budget goes, we have uh we have used some carryover money, some money that was left over in last year's budget that we've used to to fund the increase in paint this year and then um as as mentioned, we use we use BNC funds to fund streets operating and whatever doesn't go with the street operating goes to the BNC CIP fund. And so um whether we fund this in the operating or or capital budget, we're we'll we'll fund the paint, so um we didn't increase that budget, but we're we are we are funding that. Um in the vehicle maintenance fund, we uh requested a fleet software replacement. This is um something we are continuing to continuing to pursue. Uh we worked with our our IT group and we've looked at some alternatives for um for funding this from from um carryover money or or some other source rather than doing a an increase to the budget for a one-time expense, we're we're looking at other alternatives, but we we're still planning to do that um to update and update its fleet software. Um oh yeah, stormwater operators, it's not on a different page, it's on this one. Appropriations outside the budget, in November, we came and uh asked the council to appropriate some money for the replacement of a garbage truck that burned and um that's the only appropriation in in public services outside the budget. As far as fee changes in sanitation, we uh we provide the service of uh you know, residents can ask for a a roll-off dumpster to be to be brought to their home or neighborhood and then we charge them for uh the disposal of that, delivery of it, and then um our our tipping fee at the sewer or the solid waste district has gone to forty-four dollars, so we're increasing ours to make sure that we're we're not charging less than we're getting charged for that. All in. And then uh commercial front load fees are going up ten percent or various sizes of those, but I just summarized it with the percentage. Um and then uh composts that can be purchased at our compost yard over by Public Works, we're um consistently selling out of that, it's um we feel like we're to the point where we we can increase the cost of that and still still sell out. Um it's an operation that we uh we we watch closely to make sure that we're uh you know, the the green, the green cans that are brought there and the um the green waste that's brought there that we're returning it back and and selling it and we're keeping it um sustainable, so financially sustainable.
Yeah, and our our compost program is fantastic, right? We're able to divert a lot from landfill, we make something useful and that is astonishingly good price for compost. You just go take your your pickup truck over there, load it. Um I see that you're just doing a five-dollar increase for both, but what that amounts to is you know, you're doubling the price for residents, but you're not doubling it for non-residents. So I wanted to to get a sense of why we made that choice.
Well, any any comment, Shane? I would just say, you know, we're 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 trying to get rid of the material and I guess based on the demands.
Yeah, I think for us, right now, majority of what we use goes out to residents.
Yeah.
So we don't have a lot that goes to non-residents. I actually had this discussion this week with Bryce is we, I can tell you right now, we both feel, Bryce and I, that we do want to increase the non-resident, we just didn't want to go
Crazy?
Crazy, right? Um maybe it's consistent, I think next year, we're talking about raising the non-resident price and getting it closer to a a more market value for compost, because as you said, our compost is extremely
What what is market value?
For a bag?
Or a cube this or a cubic for a cubic yard, you're probably running it for just normal, if you went to Salt Lake City comparatively, you're about thirty-five dollars a cubic yard. Um really, the compost that we're really trying to to help the residents of the city. That they bring the, you know, the compost or the tree, all those ring waste in with compost, and they get the benefit of of being able to reuse that. That's what we're really trying. So next year, I think we're going to be asking for another increase to the non-residential price.
So this is is something where you want to get in early because the the compost does sell out, like you can miss out on your garden for it.
Yeah, so I would be telling you right now, it it is being heavily used. We run out typically end of April, mid mid May, we we run out and we're trying to reprocess, but yeah, we run out quickly.
So is this something where you're considering expanding the facility or doing a second facility?
We have talked about that. Our current location, property location, we're we're maxed out. Um we were looking at as a a longer-term plan because our public works yard is is expanding as the city expands and we're running out of space. So we're talking about um looking at a another site where we could expand not only our sanitation services, our streets of stormwaters and 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 combine those into a bigger uh property area, which would also be our composting. So we we at that time, we would expand our composting.
If you did that, would you also expand the number or the types of things that you compost, like pizza boxes are composted in some municipalities or would that introduce too much confusion?
Possibly. I would say yes, everything's on the top. We we've talked about biosolids, so like since Springville um they 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 use a biosolids for that. We've talked about those things, there's potential regulations for those things, but we're talking about that, but we can increase the amount of available compost.
Yeah, I've, this is like one of my favorite things that we do as a city, but I like gardening, so thank you.
Yes, we have some very passionate employees with this, so if you're interested in the science behind it, we might have a tour.
The the last fee on here is just, we have some fees that are established for um if a trucker crew has to be um dispatched to clean up someone else's mess, we we have a fee for that, but I again, that's more um trying to incentivize people not to to need it, but we want to make sure that we have a mechanism to charge that if if um if needed. As far as accomplishments, I noticed the the first bullet here is actually duplicated on the other slide where it actually belongs in stormwater, so I apologize for that. But uh like I like I mentioned, we do have uh some crossover between the the streets and stormwater crews uh that helps with some of these smaller projects. And then it talks about number of potholes, um the number of miles, number of tons of salt, things like that, so hopefully give you a good sense of the scale of 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 streets and 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 work that they do and maintenance they do. Storewater, we show both some of the uh internal projects and external projects that have been done.
Say eternal project?
Eternal, no.
Sure, it feels that way.
Yeah. Will never be done with the work, but uh yeah, we they've done a great job with the with our stormwater system. Uh again, accomplishments in sanitation, again, the scale of the number of cans of each type, um how much we've been composting and a lot of the uh services that we provide that not everyone does, but um help with the overall sanitation in in the city. By picking up the Christmas trees at people's houses, we keep, hopefully keep them from dumping in in the vacant lot across the street, things like that, so. And then again, uh the the last bullet is um I think one of our our main goals in the in the recycling area is to reduce the contamination. Um you're standing upcoming slide, our um our performance measure in sanitation is is related to uh the contamination, so. And um in fleet, again, we'll uh Warren will come, our fleet manager, will come talk in two weeks and and discuss some of these these items, but mainly the the overall vehicle replacement in in the city. Uh here's performance measures, the the streets one has has ended, we they they completed a replacement of the the street name signs with the new logo. Um and then in stormwater, we have the uh state mandated training for uh public city staff that helps us know when and how to report illicit discharges into the sewer uh storm drain system.
Okay, Jimmy, I got more questions for you.
And sorry, those, this is again calendar year, so uh by the time we get uh through through March, we haven't done a lot of that yet, but it will happen throughout the year. I have those numbers for
Okay, on the the street name signs?
Yes.
Um when we put in the new traffic signal at eight twenty north on nine hundred east, it just says eight two zero N. It's like completely inconsistent with the other signs that are along the street, like one of them has a little Provo logo, another one has north spelled out. Um so I was just wondering um if we're doing this effort to replace our signs and have them all consistent, why would we pop up a new one that just completely is different from all of them? I mean, it's very clear, you know what street you're on, but I'm curious.
I don't know, any insight on that?
As long as you change.
Well, I don't think there's anything wrong with it, and it's kind of interesting that we've got like those three signs in a row are are all very different. Well, I don't think there's anything wrong with it, and it's kind of interesting that we've got like those three signs in a row are are all very different. They're like little time capsules.
We we want to be consistent. It's era, right? And kind of sign standards have changed over from like the forties, fifties, seventies, eighties and all. So yes, they're inconsistent. As we replace them, we try to make it consistent, but I would say maybe thirty years from now, it may be more inconsistent.
Okay.
But but I think we do, as we replace, we try to make it consistent, but if they're still there. Sorry, they're functioning, right? Instead of having to go, because that's another real task that we can look into, but there is
Just the price, because it was a brand new one. Okay.
I'm glad you caught that.
So Shane that has the
Shane.
Yeah, so we we replace all the signs, um engineering. We work with our engineering department on on both the signs themselves, signals and stop signs. We make the signs um and consistency of those signs, so.
It's you with the commitment issues. You just can't consider doing.
But now, as we as we replace those, we we try to but we'll
All right.
It may have been that the engineer draws something up that he did try and it's our our scientific, so I think it was part of the plan to replace it. Yeah, we were so focused on the signal that we overlooked the signs. And and just remember too, there are, we have a ton of state roads. They have their own science standards, right? And so we try to make consistent between state and city, but oftentimes that doesn't happen.
Yeah. I've just been wondering that for, well, since the light went in, so thank you.
Um our sanitation, as I mentioned, our performance measure is uh to perform household recycling audits per month. So this is where our sanitation uh employees will uh audit as a specific, or not a specific, they'll, you know, just take a a sampling of of blue cans in the city and and see if what's being recycled is appropriate and if it's what we consider contamination, non-recyclables. And um I think they're currently doing about thirty thirty per month uh presently, so uh I think going straight to the source of where that's happening, and if if there's issues, they can, you know, put a sign on or talk to the residents and say, you know, this is this isn't really recyclable, so I think that's a one of our probably our best tools for uh catching those right at the source. And then fleet, one of our major expenses in fleet is the sanitation vehicles because they're they're constantly on the road every day. Um and they're mechanically intensive, as a lot of parts get jostled around, and if you ever take a ride along, you would feel that. So by doing these um inspections, helps us catch those issues uh before they turn into problems that 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 require downtime to fix. All right, that is the end of public services. So our last is uh last few slides are about engineering. Engineering uh operating budget in the general fund of two point seven million dollars. Uh last year, I'm uh fitting all this onto one slide, but uh our supplemental request last year requested to add a full-time signal and electrical electrical technician. Uh we have, we have one today and um we proposed this as a way to to provide uh a backup for that, but um we've been able to cover that backup through other similar positions in public works. There's not a lot, uh you know, electrical type positions, but there are a few that can help provide that backup and and we've been able to to manage there. Um as far as uh accomplishments, uh this this is a a traffic heavy list, but um talks about some of the things that we've done to to work with other uh agencies to to work with the neighborhoods and address complaints uh that we get from the residents, so.
Jimmy, I have a quick question about that. Do do traffic studies cost money? I mean, I know they cost staff time, but I mean, do we have some sort of measure of what that
So most of our traffic stays are all done in-house, so I bet everyone will build it with somebody outside of right now or
Also, this year, Rachel's working with Vern, and now neighborhoods can only request three to five traffic studies a year, so that number will never get to fifty-two.
Per name, per district.
Per district, yeah. So we'll have a total of twenty-five if they actually all request twenty-five instead of fifty-two.
And 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 a lot of that is, some of the requests are getting redundant, so you'll study it and then a year later, they want to look at it again. So this way, we're we're focused on due location. They don't change that dramatically unless it's a school or something. So and even though it's a reduced number, we've gone through sweat the city, I think, on what is really critical on most people's minds. So we'll have to say if we go back to, they're only a year or two old, and we'll keep looking at due locations of the problem.
Gordon, can you just explain how those are done? Don't you just pull the trailer out there and let us sit for a couple of days or a week or a weekend or something and then pull the numbers off the computer?
So yeah, so the way these stays are done, we actually, the trailer is a little different with the stage. We actually have cameras that you don't see when you put them up. I mean, you don't want to get to the drivers uh behavior by the uh trips. We'll put those out there, but that's not what we'll do our actual engineering study. We will report those. We'll do, we'll put up the cameras, we'll look at it, then we uh take it through the uh IT manuals, uh trans, institution transportation angles to verify what warrants, what's required, what safety issues. We pull up common accidents in the area, we look at how um we'll observe film of the area, see what's happening. We'll take account of 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 crossing people. So it gets very extensive for for others than just doing the cameras. So it generally takes several weeks to go through securing all the data, and then you have to put it into a report, looking at how those things are.
So what you're saying is we're not very transparent with where we're doing studies?
We we like drivers not to know where we're doing it, yes. It's
All right, and then we have quite a few engineering fee changes that we're proposing. Again, primarily, these are are related to construction and and public works related construction permits that um we're we're wanting to update to reflect the recent cost escalations we've seen. Um you know, a lot of them are they're not just uh uh they're they're closures, closure-related fees, uh overlay fees that, you know, the cost of of the asphalt has gone up. Uh so we we were wanting to capture that. We've got a few that are um trying to uh you know, like the, what might seem extreme here is the the five times permit fee work work without permit. That's trying to to stop that from happening, you know, you occasionally have people doing work without a permit, but uh we want to make it clear that it's it's better to get that permit uh first in the get caught on without one. The uh working without permit, oops, I drew on it with the paper. Uh that's currently four times the permit fee that we're proposing increased to five times.
Yeah, and you're, because you're increasing what the permit fee is, you're really increasing what the working without a permit fee is.
So it's just below, most of our permits are either that two hundred or two fifty. So if you go without a permit, it's going to be a thousand dollars. So we um and you'll notice a lot of the complaints that you receive are when people are going out there without a permit, and so this is a really big impact to our residents. We're trying when we were just doubling fees, it didn't seem to bother the contractors a lot to um go without a permit, and so this is hopefully going to bother them more. So that's in the term of that. Um one of the reasons you're seeing a lot of these fees increased is every year, fees are different. There are costs for different things or different uh the concrete, asphalt. Instead of trying to adjust every year, we look at it, put it in, so it's consistent for a number of years. There was a request by the council to look at this year's, so we really really took a hard hard look, and because it had been a while, a number of these have gone up. Next, wait, see.
So then these um the next pages primarily permit types um that have specific uh appearances or utilities and those fees associated with the those permits.
So Jimmy, if say you are going to replace your sewer line and it's going out into the street, so you have to like do the little barricades, you have to cut into the road and have all the permit fees, how much is the cost of that operation going to increase on the city side? Because you you're adding on lots of fees and a lot of these are, they're increasing by twenty-five percent or doubling, and so like, do I
Yeah, we'd have to run a specific, but yeah.
But but that's where it's really going to affect people, because it's not just one little fee, it's it's all of these things, and that's a situation in which they all hit you at once.
So if you are a contractor, let's suppose you want to do your house, and one of the things you're doing is um going out and venting sewer water. So there is a road cut fee and an inspection fee associated with that. And inside that fee is already your traffic control and a number of other things already taken care of. So you don't get hit multiple times with your road head. This is just a one, one fee. So um now, if you're a developer and you're doing, you're blocking lanes for five days, there's going to be some additional cost to you for road closures. Um for one, one house, we can sit down and maybe compare that, that and help look at that. Those fees are probably not changing a lot.
Okay, and that street closure, does that also apply for street closings for like events or block parties? Or is that in a different category?
That's different, yeah.
I think that's the end of uh the presentation, and if there's any questions, I think I've used most of the time.
Any questions for Jimmy? So Jimmy, there are several subsequent slides, wastewater funds is added. So then your slides?
Yes. Oh, there was probably the packet, written packet that we submitted as well to supplemental information.
Gary, why haven't you commented on ASR and how well it's doing or how well it's not doing, and then I can get the numbers from the simulator? One of my residents is curious about how the aquifer replenishing program is what results are we seeing with that?
Okay, so you know, we we just finished up five years of doing pilot study to make sure that as we did this, it worked. So we're in the process, I'm here with the mayor with, last year, we're just finishing up, um last spring, we put a twenty-four inch line from the temple, most tanks up into Rock Canyon prior to the Rock Canyon park being built. So what else, first thing we did was put that water line through the park, so we both shut the first part. So that line is in place. Right now, we're down by those tanks, building a booster station, get that water up to Rock Canyon. Okay, but we will not be pumping water up into that system until the water plant is built and finished in a year and a half. Okay, so we're still building infrastructure, for example. Right now, we're going to BYU uh Park Lot, Stadium Park Lot, and putting thirty-six inch water line through the water tank. So we're we're a lot more than that. So as far as that Rock Canyon ASR project, we have not started it yet. We started putting water into the stream. Okay, we are over Riverview Park, finishing up. That is the ASR project. Um we're using our in-house people to uh finish that project and try to save money on our costs, and it became quite expensive. Finish that project, and we should have finished that this year. So for us, that will be, that'll be certain, that'll be a certain site we'll receive water this year.
So we actually haven't started yet. We just did a study. So do we have the results of the study that we can release to the public?
Yeah, our engineering.
Can you send that to me?
Yeah, I'll I'll see where it's at. I guess we can have
I'll send it to Justin and then he can send that to you.
All right.
Thanks, Gary. It probably doesn't, but it it'll give me enough leniency to let you answer this person and say, we actually haven't started yet. Thanks.
Thank you, Jimmy. You've covered a lot of detail and significant material. Well, well done. Thanks for your patience.
Could I just add one last closing thought to this? His part was exciting and riveting as it was, but really what I want to say about it is you have a fantastic Public Works folks. I'm telling you from top to bottom, these guys can do anything. We have them doing work all over the city, putting in heavy projects all over. You have the most incredible folks, whether it's in the management or the right down to the people doing the garbage trucks, and they're phenomenal. So uh just this last year, it's been incredible to get to know them, watch what they, which, watch what they do and see the care and the interest they have to do a fantastic job for the residents. So that wasn't any of the slides, so I just want to make sure that got said.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Gordon. And thank you again, Jimmy. Next, we have a discussion regarding an ordinance amending water fees on the Provo City Consolidated Fee Schedule. This will be presented by Keith Larson of Bowen Collins and Associates.
So what, while Keith is coming in, I'm just going to give a brief introduction to to some of the work that's been done since we last met with the council. Um some of the uh the process that we've gone through. I guess the direction we got from from council at the end of the last uh night meeting where we discussed water rates and tiers um was to to look closer and um uh I'm going to explain some of the, some of the steps we took to to further evaluate the water rates and the need. So the first, as I mentioned in the in the budget, the first um the first item we talked about was the the input, the revenue. We have, we've we've talked uh several times about the impact fees and how raising those helped uh lower the need for the water rates to go up. And uh the other thing that we've talked about and we looked closer at was uh how we factor in outside funding that we receive. I think, you know, the last last year and again this year, we've had some some significant work that's been done, improvements have been made to our water system that were funded through uh projects that were were happening uh in the city and particularly by other other entities. And so one of the things that we we added to our forecast was an assumption uh for a four hundred thousand dollars a year from developer contributions uh for twenty-six on, and and that's something that we will continue to to evaluate as we go. I guess now's as good a time as any to mention that um one of our recommendations that changes has changed is um we're recommending to to adopt one year rather than all, I think eight is what we had last time. So that will allow us to continue to to monitor these these types of uh of changes. Uh one of the other items we looked at was inflation. We had assumed a three percent inflation. Uh we did a few alternatives. We looked at at um at different uh percentages than three. Uh we decided to to stay with three for now. And um based on on history, you know, we it's a major assumption that has has big imp- implications on the future years. And so that's another one that we we want to make sure that we watch closely to, whether it's higher or lower, to uh to implement for for future future impacts to the rates. And then um as I mentioned in the last presentation, our uh our overall revenue funds both operating and capital, so um we we went through the operating budget and um we look closely at, it's what what's being funded by by the water fund and what what really belongs there and um over the years, we have uh water used to be our our biggest utility. Wastewater since surpassed it in revenue, but uh for a long time, water was kind of seen as if we needed something in Public Works, uh water was, you know, the place that we could afford it. And so um in the past, our our Public Works Director, my position, some of our GIS position Our Public Works Director, my position, some of our GIS positions. Gary's position, he oversees water and wastewater, but his position is funded completely in water. In the past, we've we've done a transfer from wastewater of about five hundred eighty thousand dollars a year. To try to to compensate for that. So, but this year, since we last met with you, we we took a close look. At each of those positions, each each aspect of the water budget that's being funded. Or of the public works. Operation is being funded from water. And we we reallocated based on where we think. It really belongs. And so part of that was, we're proposing to. Split those costs where they belong, eliminate the transfer from the wastewater fund and replace it with the actual costs. So there will be a bigger impact than the current transfer in wastewater, but. It's probably a better and more transparent reflection of of the work that's being done for wastewater. By positions that used to be funded solely in water. So what that did was allowed us to, by allocating those costs where we feel they. They more appropriately belong, it's allowed us to decrease the operating costs in the water budget. And thus reducing the the need for. For revenue because we've. By freeing up that operating money, it's it's allowed us to put more money into capital without having to do a rate increase. As high. And so. With all those. Things that we looked at, we we worked with Keith to have him revise these these projections. One of the other things that we we did, as you can see on the the slide or the table to the right. We're proposing to do five percent a year for three years, which again, we would. We just do the first five and and check back again a year from now to see if five is is appropriate for next year, but. You know, that. It doesn't front load the the increases like before, but it still allows us to get, you know, I'll let Keith talk to this, but. It allows us to get to the sustainable level we're trying to hit. But it allows us to do it a little bit slower to to hopefully ease the the concerns of. Of the residents and and the impact of of this. We we've split this into two items on today's agenda. So that we can focus first on what the council is comfortable with as far as a revenue. In the water fund and then. Once. Once we answer any questions related to that, we can, we can move on and talk about. The the mechanism for receiving those funds, which would be potentially a tier grade. Keith, do you want to come on up and? I don't know, probably.
Counselor Handley. I know that asked your question. Um, maybe. I I had a question that maybe Keith will end up answering, or Jimmy, I don't know who's the right person to ask this, but. I I'd be curious to understand, I always understood that the front loading was key to keeping the the overall cost down, so if we're. Not, if we're proposing a flatter start to the increase for the first three years. I'd be curious to know what the overall impact is for the costs that we're. Incurring as a result. I mean, in other words, are we? Are we making this much more expensive over the long term because we're not raising the rates in the first couple of years? So, I mean, because you have, you have there in year four, five and six. And seven, looks like you've got eight, eight, seven, seven.
Yeah. So I'll I'll note two things, the other slide that's here. Shows just the capital projects. And I will emphasize that because you're transferring that one point one million up. In the next year, you are actually doing a pretty large increase. In the first year, we're calling it a five percent increase, but the effect is essentially. Very similar to what the twelve percent increase was. Previously, you're just getting it by transferring some of those other costs into other funds. And so the that increase is that first year increase is pretty close to what it was. With that said, though.
Wait a second, before you move on. The other cost, is that what Jimmy was referring to in terms of administrative costs being assigned to the activities being done? Is that, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, correct, okay, yeah. So. I I mean. I I I I hope everybody understands that this doesn't create money, somebody's still going to have to pay for it, it will just be paid for through. Other mechanisms, the other funds that would be picking up a larger portion of their of their cost.
I g- I guess my question still is, if it's five percent, even with that. Accounted for. The rates that you're proposing for those eight years. Wouldn't the, wouldn't the revenue be more quickly raised and the overall cost be less if those first three years were higher?
So. Y- y- yes, so.
Even even accounting for the this.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I I guess the point I'm trying to make is that the first initial year increase is not that much different. So there's not too much difference in that first year. However, you are correct, in the original plan, there's a little bit more money in these three year, two, three years here. And then a little bit less on the backside because we were getting upfront. And if if you remember in our conversations before, when we push projects. We are at risk of having those. Projects result in higher costs because of pipeline failures, things like that. I will say, this small shift, I have not added additional cost. We are rolling the bones just a little bit that we're not going to have failures from those. That's small amount that has been shifted, so you are correct. I will just note that it's not that large of a shift. We are trying to balance the. The interest of the. That some of the council members express in. Softening the blow just a little bit.
Counselor Christians. So Jimmy, the. Is the administrative cost is being reallocated, is that the seven percent gap or? Because I'm trying to figure out.
So it's part of it.
I know it's part of it, I'm just wondering what portion?
Yeah, so I don't know the the percentage impact that it has on the first year. But that in combination with the the outside funding that we factored in and the. Guess one of the things that I I didn't mention was the, we looked at. The existing revenue trend, you know, we we started this process with Keith a year or two ago. And we, since that time, we've seen revenues come in a little bit higher than they had been trending before. You know, again, that's another reason that we think it's it's wise to look at this annually. Because by looking at that, you know, this year, we've, we didn't do a rate increase, but our, so far, revenues are up. But we still have a major two months of of usage before the fiscal year end, so you know, we're we're trying to balance that. By by assuming a little bit of that. Revenue trend as well, so there's, there's a couple of different factors that have resulted in the in the five percent. But I I don't have the exact percentage.
So. Uh, it's about five and a half percent is what that ends up being. So instead of a twelve percent, you're ending up at about, you know, ten and a half percent increase. Functional increase in your. Ability to fund projects. So it is, it is a small decrease from what was previously recommended, but. The it, did that answer your question?
That's very helpful, that's what I was looking for.
And something else is. It's important when we spend the money on the repairs, so spending money on repairs now is less expensive than spending it in the future. And so even though we'd be doing a smaller rate increase now because we pulled this other pot of money. Will will be okay, is that the idea?
Yeah, we're still pulling from that that pot.
Right.
I and and I do want to to George's point, there is a little bit that's being deferred.
Yeah.
But it's hard to say, okay, if we defer that one or two years. What happens? Sorry, I cut you off.
Well, yeah, because I mean, I I'm trying to think of, because on the one side, there's, there's the expenses, there's actually the repairs, the. The money that we're spending to do the work. And on the other side, there's the income that's coming in because of the rate increase. And so if we front load the rate increase, then we've got that higher amount and then we're adding on to the higher amount and more, right? So we're getting ahead of the game that way. By having this very low rate increase at the front, it's going to take us longer to get up to that level. So that makes me. That makes me feel a little uncomfortable because I just don't trust the outside funds as much. It it seems a little bit.
Outside funds meaning? Developer.
Well, or federal grants or things like that, that we've been able to leverage in the past. I prefer to be more self-sufficient on it, but this does recognize that we've, we have had help and that for this year at least. We feel confident with the outside funds that are coming in. And so for this year at least, it's probably okay to do this smaller rate increase. And next year we'll know. If we have outside funds or not, and if the rate that's recommended now is still going to be appropriate then.
Yeah.
I don't know. I, 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 I've, I'm feeling more uncomfortable with this than I did before. Even though I I appreciate. The work and the care and. I'm looking at at all of the things, I'm I'm just. We've introduced more budgeting factors, you know, like one or two percent here and there, and that's, that worries me.
But can I just ask that? So when we started with the five percent, one of the things we asked Keith to do was make sure that in year ten, we had the same amount of money now. To your comment, you get that money a little bit on the back end, but it gets you to the same dollar amount, so. We showed the five, five, eight, eight, seven, seven, four, four. And and there's a lot of ways we could look at it, so it's it's basically just trying to balance some of the concerns to all the increases versus. But at the end of the day, you get the same dollar amount over that ten year, and there's a slight difference of. When you get that money, but that that was kind of what we wanted to make sure we did.
Well, and if I didn't emphasize it enough, you get to the same location in ten years. And you generate the same amount of revenue for. Capital investment. In twenty twenty five dollars with either of those plans, it's just when it comes in is the question.
Counselor McKay.
I think this is fantastic and I appreciate your time on it.
Other aspects to present, Keith, or should we just ask questions or?
Just if there's other questions.
So what we're thinking is coming back in two weeks with the ordinance, it's in showing in your packet. And and if, again, we're not asking about today, but if if. What you're going to see unless you tell us something different is a one-year five percent income, so that's what kind of the ordinance will show unless we're here to do it.
All right, my my question is, so what I'm hearing is that there's value in doing one year. So that we can just reevaluate and see how that makes sense. Or are we avoiding the tough decision now? And waiting another year to make that hard decision?
Yes and no, here's what I will tell you, because we delayed, we were a lot more thoughtful, that one point one million dollar reduction isn't just relocation. Of personnel, there were things that we saw in the water department, a little bit of a deep dive. That we were able to self-correct and say. We can eliminate these without limiting services or benefit to the residents. So we think giving us a year to look at us, give ourselves a continual hard look. But again, what you said is a hard decision next year, so I'm not discounting that, but I'm just saying. We're going to take the opportunity internally regardless of what you do. And we're still going to take a hard look at ourselves and come back with what we ought to be doing, so. That absolutely did not answer your question, but that was.
So you, you wholeheartedly support this approach?
Yeah, and, yes, and we sat down with Keith to make sure that we were getting to the right place and that our assumptions weren't wild. Like. Jimmy said, we looked at the inflation, at the end of the day, we took Keith's recommendation. And we wanted to validate everything we're doing with you because. We think it's important to make sure we're doing that.
Counselor Handley.
Maybe I, maybe I'd misunderstood what we were contemplating before because I know we can't find future councils, so even if we adopted a recommended. Eight-year plan, right, that can't be binding to future councils. So maybe this is just a semantics question that we were dealing with all along, I guess the issue for me, I mean, maybe it's just a warning to whoever's going to be on the council in twenty twenty eight. If this, if we stay at five and then we jump to eight, that's still going to be a political hurdle that's going to have to be crossed and. That may be the hard decision that we were contemplating now, that's that a future council is going to. Have to contemplate and there's going to have to be the political will to say. You know, this was, I mean, I guess, I guess, so maybe. Maybe what I would like to know is whether or not this schedule remains, even if we say we're committing to the one year. This is what this council assumed was a. Projected scenario for solving for the eight-year problem. Because we're trying to solve an eight-year, ten-year problem, we're not trying to solve next year.
And so I think we would anticipate bringing this exact chart back to you next year, ensuring what we did do won't be accomplished. So, so. It it should never be a surprise because each year you should see this chart. Is is basically how you want us to structure the ordinance, you can structure it to be automatic, again, any council can change that, we can recommend change. But Jimmy is really good getting an ordinance reviewed by Brian's group so that it. You will accomplish what you want to accomplish and we can bring back what you want.
Counselor Christians. Well, I too wanted to add to Teresa's comment, nice work. And even the pushback, it may seem kind of weird, like you make a recommendation, we push back and then you come back with what we asked for and we're pushing back again. So this is what, you know, citizens are asking for, is like, can't we squeeze, can't we do a better job, can't we rethink? And so love hearing all the good work that's gone into that, so I too am grateful. I feel much more comfortable with something like five percent and so what you've said makes sense to me and I I too am grateful for the thorough work on this. And speaking of resident feedback, that it be more even or level over the period of time. Uncomfortable as well, what's being presented.
I guess I would just add that the ordinance that I prepared associated with this. Applies at five, one-time five percent rate increase to the existing rates. So. We'll, we'll talk later about. Alternatives, but we wanted to say, see. If council was okay with that, with this approach and this this rate.
I support that.
We can talk about, we can talk about implementation later.
Counselor.
Of course, I think a motion that we. Go ahead with this, do you want that from us?
I think it would be helpful for us.
Okay, we have a motion from Counselor McKay with a second. From Counselor Christensen to support what's being proposed. And to to bring it back in for ordinance.
For the night meeting.
For a night meeting in two weeks.
Yeah. Could I just?
Discussion?
Yeah, maybe just a quick discussion point, I'm supportive as well, but I I. Maybe it's the, again, the eight-year plan with this appended, with this appended, that this is.
Yes.
Sort of the, again, noting noting that every year it's going to have to be reevaluated, but this is, I just. I just am worried about losing sight of the long term. So if we have the graphs, we have the the layout of the proposed rate changes for the future years. And that every year presumably that would. Be adjusted as necessary to get us to that same dollar amount in twenty thirty three.
Right, because it may be that in another year, we'd have to do ten percent instead of eight because something has gone terribly wrong. And so this would be a guidance, like this is what we're anticipating for the future right now. But by not adopting this, this gives us flexibility to either go up or down as is appropriate. Although the likelihood of going down is probably smaller than the likelihood of needing to go up.
That's usually how it works.
And then in twenty thirty three, someone in the future is going to get to reevaluate the whole system again, right?
Right.
So much fun.
Yeah.
Great, I'll call for a vote then on the motion. Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Hanley.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes, I just, George's comment about this being included as some sort of a. I don't know, contextual note, is not part of the motion.
Okay.
But.
You could do that after.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor McKay.
Yes.
That motion passes six votes to zero with Counselor Hoben excused.
Okay, well, do I, yeah, maybe just make a motion that when we bring this back in two weeks for clarification, that this um. Proposed schedule for the next eight years be included and that that would be. Part of the annual review process.
Okay, this motion by this by Counselor Hanley with a second. By Counselor Whipple. Uh, Counselor, I'll call for a vote, Counselor Hanley.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes, Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Christians.
Yes.
Counselor McKay.
Yes.
Counsel.
Yes.
The motion passes six votes to zero with Counselor Hoben excused. Great, thank you Jimmy and thank you Keith, we'll contin- continue then with the second. A part of this, which is an ordinance implementing new tiered water fees on the Provo City Consolidated Fee Schedule.
Want me to jump into it? Okay. So um. Since we've last talked, uh, a couple of things. Uh, number one, we revised the proposed increase to five percent. And so every slide you're going to see here reflects that five percent. Uh, we made an assumption that that's what would happen and 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 so here we are. Uh, number two, the state legislature, uh. Uh, as as we had discussed, they did end up passing House Bill two eighty-five. And if we. Let's see. I scroll down. There we go, alright. Uh, oh, excuse me, this is two seventy-four, I'm getting my bills uh mixed up then. Uh, this had a couple of requirements. Uh, and there were some questions last time we talked about, do our rates work for this? So first is requires a water supplier to incorporate increasing block units of water use. Uh, i.e. a tiered structure. Your current rates do do this and meet the letter of the law, you have a very small increase at a hundred thousand gallons, so I would say. You're okay there. Uh, requires water suppliers to consider water conservation when setting water rates. There's not a lot of. Explanation of what that means necessarily. Um, I think there's at least a decent argument that your seasonal uh differentiation between water and summer could be considered. Taking conservation to account, so we probably make an argument for that one. The last one is stipulates that water rates must be based on a generally accepted rate-setting method, including a standard. Or method established by American Waterworks Association. Without giving legal advice, uh, this is the one where I think uh. The tiered portion of your structure uh does not. N- necessarily align with AWWA methodology. There is an AWWA methodology for seasonal rates and we use that methodology when we created those rates ten years ago. Uh, however, um, at least my interpretation would be that. We're on a little bit thin ice with our current rates, uh, and that we probably need to look at an alternative. So with that said, um, we'll go back to. Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you just go back? And why is that?
So um. The differential you have between the your first block of a hundred thousand and your second block is very minimal, it's a few pennies. It is not consistent with AWWA cost of service methodology. So if if somebody said, is this, is this tiered rate consistent with AWWA and I was pulled in as. Uh, a legal expert, I would say, no, that is not consistent. Um, okay, so with that said, then we go back to one way. Uh, in which I can feel confident that you could say, yes, we are complying with AWWA cost of service methodology. Is the methodology that we discussed previously. Um, and so these are the same rates that we've talked about, the same ratios. Uh, the same allowances, um, the only thing that has changed is that the numbers inside. We have uh moved from the twelve percent increase that was previously discussed to the five percent increase. That's what's in here to uh today. Um, you'll note that we have also included, as we've discussed before, we've included different uh. Volume breaks depending on your meter size, which is reflective of lot size, so we have. Attempted to make some sort of accommodation for lot size. Uh, there's always more room to cut that into smaller pieces. Uh, make more bins uh as we we would look here, but but we do account for that in in those. Uh, meter sizes. And so this affects uh the majority of your customers in terms of number of customers, the residential schedule. Uh, we also developed the uh commercial. Or I should better say non-residential and include industrial, institutional, et cetera. Um, and so that is reflected here, again, these are the same rates that you've seen pre- or same structure you've seen previously. Uh, the last thing to note is we did uh do an updated analysis of the summary of impacts. This is for three-quarter inch residential customers. Uh, we looked at low, average, high and very high, uh, for those who like percentiles. Tenth percentile, fiftieth percentile, ninetieth and ninety-fifth. Um, for simplicity, I rounded to the dollar. Below and average users actually see a small decrease associated with. Uh, with moving to the. Um, increasing block rates, basically to offset these, these are, this is a revenue neutral change overall. So there is a small decrease, but it's less than a dollar here. Um, and that's basically the presentation, so.
Um, so our our reason for doing this is we understand that we need to. Deal with our infrastructure and pay for some things. And I don't understand why our average user, which we have to assume is most people, is gonna have zero increase. It seems like we should be having an increase on everybody.
Okay, so.
And it should be less.
Yeah, uh, so this. Uh, uh, that's a great point, this shouldn't have been labeled existing, that should have been. Uh, labeled existing structure with a five percent increase. So everybody will see a five percent increase uh regardless, and then this will be the shift. From your existing rate structure to a proposed. Uh, tiered rate structure, so I apologize, that's my mistake, but yes, everybody would see the five percent. And then these two would see slightly less than five percent, uh, because they would. Have the shift.
Okay, so you're saying the low user will will have a five percent increase.
Yeah.
The average user will have a five percent increase. So what's the increase for the high user and the very high user?
Well, so I if we could convert it into percentage, but this is five percent above what they're paying today. Um, I'll do easy math on this one. Uh, so they're probably paying about eighty-eight dollars roughly. They're going to ninety-three, so seventeen plus five, twenty-three, so they're seeing a roughly twenty percent increase.
Well, they're going to a hundred, from eighty-seven to a hundred and ten. Is what they're going to, right? Alright, so everyone is at least getting a five percent increase.
Yeah, everybody's seen an increase.
Because that made no sense to me.
Yeah, uh, thi- this, these two will see slightly less than five percent if we make the shift. Uh, but pretty close to five percent.
So it's five percent, ten percent, ninety percent, maybe five percent.
The that was percentiles, percentile users, sorry, maybe I shouldn't have brought that up, but this is. Ten percent of users fall in this category. Fiftieth pers- fifty percent are above and fifty percent below of the average user. High user consists of the top ten percent and very high user, the top five percent of your users.
And the top. High user, those use hundred thousand gallons, or this would be five thousand gallons?
Uh, yeah, I'd have to pull up the old. Um, I don't think they're even using a hundred thousand gallons, I think ninetieth percentile was. Uh, like sixty thousand gallons, something like that. And keep in mind again, this is residential three-quarter inch. I could do uh comparisons for any other users, but we're trying to. Give a a a, an easier view to digest. Uh, y- yes, for the.
So the high users are still.
Yeah, my recollection was the high user just barely got into tier three, maybe for one month.
And the very high user, they're.
They're in tier three for pure three months, yeah.
Counselor Hamlin.
Well, maybe just to address um. Counselor McKay's concern, which I think would be anybody's uh not not understanding this graph, maybe if you add a. A third column that or an additional column that says. I mean, let's change the wording on that, say existing bill.
Right.
Uh, five percent increase, average monthly bill, new bill with three tiers. And then I think that would be easier for people to.
I think that's a great suggestion. Would it be helpful or too much information to put percentages on there?
The percentile or percentage?
Percentages, meaning.
Do do both the percentages and the percentiles, let's let's tell the numbers in.
I could probably.
We just need to understand true change, like what it really, because it looks terrible to say that you're just gonna punish the high users.
Well, and what's interesting too is that you can be a low user for most of the year and then jump into the average user for. Of, you know, a portion of the year, so it's not like any user is consistently in one of these categories. So looking at the average of their monthly bills doesn't really make sense, right? Because I'm a low user for, I think probably eight months out of the year, and then I'm an average user in the summer. I'm not an average user all year. And so. And that's where we we see the real issue in our bills, right, we have our nice low bills in the winter and in the summer it. Bumps up and people will feel it because they're not averaging out their water use. So that it's consistent every month, right? And so they'll be like, hey, but my water rate in August is like four times what it was before.
But I think having those calculators somewhere where people can get them.
Yeah.
Yes.
Like Justin, if we could post them somewhere that people can look at them, I think that's gonna be. The true tell to everybody what exactly it means to them. Because this still won't mean anything to a lot of the regular public. But when they can start logging their stuff into those calculators, thank you Barry, by the way. Those are always amazing and they're always very truth-telling. I think that is what is going to be the truth. And kind of instructing them on how they can pull up their bill and where they can find their their monthly usage.
I know with with our, a lot of electric plants, you can kind of do an average for your utilities, do we do that with water too?
I'm confirming that, I believe so.
Okay, yeah, because then you could do an average bill and you would be able to budget pretty well, you wouldn't have to be putting aside extra money in the winter to pay for your summer water. I always figure it balances out because I spend more on electricity and heat in the winter and then I spend more on water in the summer, so. It levels that way.
John, do we do that, do we allow them to have a month, I don't, I don't do that, but he's, do we allow them to do a month-to-month-to-month thing? So somebody pays consistent rate all year round?
I I will note, it's not recommended best practice because. One of the reasons you have tiered rates is to send price signals. Um, but that's not required by the law, I'll just, that is best practices, you pay the month you use.
Yeah, to your point, Counselor Bogdan, I know Counselor Hoben had mentioned in his social media posting that he hadn't yet. Plugged this into his the calculator, but. It's helpful to see that, it'll be interesting to see once that's available, how this plays out. We'd also talked about a um, some kind of appeal process for agricultural use. So that those who um are high water users. But have agricultural needs might be able to appeal.
I I do have a concern about that, though. Because some of those emails that we're getting in, it seems like it's a choice, like they could have paid to replace a pump.
Okay.
And decided to shift to culinary water instead. And to me, the reason why we have irrigation water is for that purpose. And I don't want to encourage people to hop over and not replace the stuff that they have. But if it's, if it's something that. Is a different circumstance, that I would be open to look at, but does that make sense?
Sure.
I really don't think we want to encourage people to go from irrigation to culinary water.
I I was just gonna mention, House Bill two seventy-four does require. You to have an exception for urban farming.
Okay.
It does not define what that is, and I think Jimmy has a couple thoughts.
First thought is, uh, John has confirmed with customer service that we do offer. Um, as far as the requirement in the bill. What I've. Um, put into the ordinance that I submitted is. The alternative for those who are determined to have urban farm use, is that they would be charged at. Residential tiers, so uh we have separate tier blocks for each meter size. Probably the easiest way to administer that for for the farming would be to just want those as non-residential. So that would give them the larger. Again, we're gonna have to establish the administrative process for giving an exception.
Yeah, I'm I'm really glad that you're looking at that, my. Ben and I run a communal garden in the Mazer neighborhood, we've set it up with, you know, drip tape and everything to be as efficient as possible, there's still. A lot more water use for that single-family residential home than there is for the ones next to it, but we're. It's beating the whole neighborhood out of it, so it it's a good use. The law here is is worthless for giving us real guidance on that, I mean, I'm looking at it again, I'm like, this is. This is terrible, um. But. Would we, Brian, need to direct administration to build a criteria or appeals process? Are they just going to do that on their own?
Well, I I guess I, I don't know, I don't know if they've already discussed, I mean, two comments, one is. It doesn't actually require you to have an exception, it requires you to consider. How to promote it. Your consideration of how to promote it to not promoting it. Right, I mean, again, to to Rachel, a law just doesn't tell you what you need to do.
Yeah.
Secondly, that particular provision doesn't apply until twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So you don't have to do that right now. So but so if you, so I guess in answer Rachel's question, if you want to do it now, you should express that. And if you have ideas about how you want to do it, you should express that.
And and I I do want to use, do that now because I think we do want to. Encourage people who are trying to be self-sufficient with their food, who are sharing. Their their zucchinis with their neighbors or have orchards or or things like that, you know, the remnant orchards that still exist on a few properties. I think those are good community resources and. But I think they're also fairly rare, like there's not a lot of parcels in the cities that are making that kind of use. So having a an appeal or an exemption process for those. Takes care of what would feel. Like a punitive thing for people who are doing good things, it would would get rid of that concern, it would encourage the good thing that we want for our community. Um. But it would allow us to go through with these rates that are. Are. Fair and prudent, so. That's that's the little carve-out that. I saw that would would really help the community and help some of those individual property owners significantly. So I'm I'm grateful for this and. After our discussion, if we need to do a motion for that, I'll do that.
Counselor McKay.
I'm worried about people being educated on. I'm worried about people being educated on keeping their trees alive and the importance of the aquifer and watering their grass and like some people's split reaction is, oh, let's rock everything and you know, let things die and sanctimonies about letting their whole yard die and that's not what's best for our environment. We know that. And the the cooling effects and the emissions, sequester, all that stuff is so important with our trees and our all of our alive things. It's just the beauty of our neighborhood and walking around and be able to walk in shade and so I don't know if there, I think there's more education on this for um residents, because so many think it's so black and white and it's just not. And I'm worried about them, about us losing vegetation.
Counselor Handley.
Yeah, I I I would agree with that. I think I think uh Hannah Salzle in our previous water conservation conversations on the council from several years ago. Uh, we did develop some good recommendations for citizens. I just don't know how widely known they are. And so I think um it would be good for the city to continue to promote healthy, balanced ways of serving water on their properties. I mean, it does seem to me that this issue is con- confusing in the public and maybe on the council because there's kind of three things operating at the same time. There's a state law that's imposing its will on us. There's uh a a question of how to accurately account for costs to the system that different levels of users uh incur. And then there's the the question of water conservation itself, and I think we may have differences of opinion uh among us on the council on any one of those necessarily or or perhaps, but it seems like with all three of them operating at the same time. It my, I've been trying to engage in this on the in the public a little bit and it just it just seems like somebody will take one part of that and and go in a completely different direction with it and it's to, I think, for people to understand why a ga- a gallon costs differently based on different users. Um, no matter how many analogies I've given or seen or or used from somebody else, it doesn't seem to sit well with with a lot of people. Um, I don't know if that's the majority of the people. Uh, I don't I don't really have a sense of that, but my my feeling is that A, this is state law. This is best way to meet that requirement. I think we should adopt it. But I think it's also the uh and the best way to capture the actual cost on the system that different users have. Um, and I think if it adds to our water conservation efforts, then that's also a a benefit um as long as uh we educate people about how to do that in a balanced way. I think that that's a net gain for us as a city. So I see this as a really positive step forward. Uh, even though I I still worry that um maybe in combination with city efforts uh from the mayor's office, from uh city staff and from the council, we can do our level best to educate the public about why this is necessary and and why we're moving in this direction. It still seems like a hard uphill climb uh politically, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bogdan.
So the one thing that I think would help that is very confusing on the website, we don't have anybody with customer service here, is it has my usage, right? And so it'll tell you how many gallons you've used today. But it doesn't make any sense to me on the website. It is just like it's not in a sensible form. I don't even know what units of measure they're using there. Um, if we could get that to where it made sense, if it was this hundred, there's thousand gallons for whatever. Because it doesn't seem like that's what it is. I think that would help. And then the education component of directing people to go there, I think that would help ease some of that because then they'd be like, oh, I'm nearing that hundred thousand or fifty-five thousand gallons. I don't have money for that this month because my electrical bill is out of insane for cooling costs. So then they can do, Gary's analogy of water their lawn or let it go a little bit brown. Or water their orchard or let it suffer a little bit for the next couple of months until my cycle rolls back over and I can start again. Did we ever figure those numbers out, Justin?
Well, I was gonna say, so Annalee Larson, our customer service billing managers that are hand raised, I think she's got something to chime in. And she may be able to be able to answer some of those questions, so. Annalee, I don't know if you can hear us or oh, perfect.
Hi. Yeah, I had it raised earlier when you were asking about budget billing for water. Um, and I think Amanda's already asked that for you. Um, I'm not sure what the ask was from Becky. Um, you're you're trying to ask what unit of measurement we bill in or what was that question?
So when I was looking it up before, if I go to my usage, I'm supposed to be able to see how many thousand gallons I am using.
Correct.
Up to date, whatever unit of measure it gave me didn't make, it made no sense to how.
Yeah, so we bill in T-gal, which is one unit equals a thousand gallons. So if it's saying that you're using three, that would be three thousand gallons. Um, but it's it's probably showing you from read to read. So you just have to understand how to read it and I'd be happy, me or Amanda would be happy to walk through that with you.
Because it was showing, I can't remember what it was. It was a couple of months ago that I looked at it, but Justin wasn't showing me like way more than even my current usage or even my average usage. It was just weird. It wasn't tracking it right. And so I think the very, very key component, especially in in a key education piece, if we're gonna go to this other tiered route, I think it's only fair if we offer the service that people know how to use it and that it actually makes sense. Because I like to, I would like to start pushing people to that reference so that they can control their own usage. And they can control their own bill, rather just than just saying, I don't know what I spend until I get my bill, which is what I've heard. It's no, you can actually go to my usage and you can actually control what you use. I think that's 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 a better message to send than you're gonna get cut off at a hundred thousand and then you're gonna have to start paying this really big water bill. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think um I saw that Amanda is there, but it we are actually also in the process of upgrading our portal as well, so we're hoping to get even better information out to the public as well. Um, and water is just a little bit trickier for us to get through to the portal and maybe Amanda can speak to that. But we we do get like energy, we get those fifteen-minute reads, like every hour. We get fifteen-minute reads and with water, it's a little bit different because it comes in as one file. But we are working on upgrading that to make it even more user-friendly.
Thank you. Just. May I add to that?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a couple of things to consider. One is that some customers are still on meters that measure in three-quarter. Um, or sorry, not three-quarter, but in in hundred cubic feet. So there's a conversion factor and in the area where you are, it's very likely that you're one of those years. But the system is set up for T-gal, so that's something to look at. I'd be happy to come in and do a presentation on the consumption portal. It's really pretty user-friendly, but there may be some.
Um, Amanda, this may be a question for you. Is it possible um with our usage and everything to put in an alert that would give us a an email or a text or something that says, hey, you're approaching another tier?
There actually is.
Okay.
Very cool.
So that that would do it. So that way you don't have to log in and see it. You can just sign up for the alert. So I remember I had a cell phone data plan one point that would say, okay, you're approaching this this point.
But I think we need to be educated on it so that when we get questions and when we get the angry people and we get all these things that we can direct them to that that place. But I also think there needs to be an education component is my ask from Public Works and from Customer Service as well as council to start teaching people how they can control their bill. If I may just add one more thing, we do have a video on the website that customers can watch that shows them how you use the portal. So I would definitely start with that. They can go through the review, how to how the world works, figure their setting, their alerts, things like that.
Any other comments or discussion on this, Counselor Handley?
I, maybe in the spirit of clarification, I'd like to make a motion that in two we, has this proposed to come back in two weeks?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, so I would like to make a motion that we uh bring this back in two weeks for an evening vote and that it uh the three-tiered proposal as has been presented be what we vote on.
It's four tiers, George.
Four tiers?
Three tiers.
So three tiers.
Oh, four user types, yep. Thank you. See, this is where we get.
With with some better clarification on this particular slide, yeah.
Yeah.
I want to know the exact percentage increase for each of the users.
We can do that.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Is there a second to Counselor Handley's motion? Second by Counselor Christiansen. Any other discussion? All right, we'll call for a vote. Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Lippel?
Yes.
Counselor Christiansen?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of six zero with Counselor Holden.
Hey, I do another quick little motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I would move that, um who should do this? I I would want to be Public Works, but I can't tell them to do stuff. But I need someone to develop a policy for that urban gardening exemption or allowance.
Should we have staff?
Who?
On that?
Who wants to take ownership of that one?
We're we're gonna do that.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
We'll bring that back as part of this.
As part of it? Okay. Well, if they're gonna bring it back as part of it, then we don't need a motion for it.
Okay.
So what, we're gonna save that motion. It's a really important part.
All right. Thank you, Keith. Thanks for your work on this, for helping us move this along. There was an interesting white paper emailed to us this morning too by Andrew South and other professors, if you haven't had a chance to look at that.
Yeah.
Um, we'll move then to a discussion regarding a property tax um presented by Counselor, by Council Executive Director Dustin Harris.
All right. Thanks, Council. I hope you all have well, I don't know who had all three of these on their bingo card, budgets, water rates and property taxes, but if you did, come see me after. You got a prize. Um, I'm gonna swing or I'm gonna run through these first couple of slides really quickly. Uh, they were in your packet for review and don't wanna um belabor this presentation, but it's there for for your education and review as well as for citizens, just to review of um kind of high level, how Utah, property tax in Utah was developed. Um property tax regulations are found state code in uh chapter fifty-nine two. Um, but really just wanted to kind of start here and remind remind everyone how property tax rates are created. So they're created by dividing prior year revenue from property for from um taxable property values gives you your tax rate. So as rates go up, um, the idea is for revenue to stay level, so your rates will drop as taxable values go up and also the inverse. If for some reason taxable values go down, which maybe one day we'll see, we have not seen that in a long time, um then then tax rates will go up. Um so unless unless a taxing entity such as the city were to propose a property tax increase, there would not be an increase to property taxes. Rates would change presumably presumably based off of property tax values, um but the revenue would would stay the same. Um, real quickly, um how is valuation assessed? I think this is a really important point, especially for the public. Hopefully, we've got our large audience tuning in. Um, but property taxes are assessed by the local county assessor, not by the city. I know a lot of times we get those questions. Um, always happy to help guide citizens to have questions to the best person over at the assessor's office if they have questions. Um, but there are a number of of different types of properties and assessments. So you get primary, secondary properties, commercial, green belt, vacant land. There are all these different types of properties um that the assessor taxes. Some properties, um very few in in the grand scheme of things are centrally assessed, so they're assessed by the state. These are typically uh like railroads, mines, some very specialized entities. Um, so county assessor values properties as of January first prepares the tax rule that's due on the twenty-second. Um, and that is then passed on to taxing entities for rate setting. Um, and then just as a quick reminder, so real property, um will go up and down based off of market value, increase or decrease. Um, and then there's one portion that isn't factored into uh well, this factored in based off of new growth. So uh new builds, new value, new commercial structures will come in as a separate portion. And so that will get you kind of this incremental growth in property tax revenue. Um valuation again, you know, in our cases determined by Utah County, um so the assessor establishes market assessed value um of the property by appraising uh value of the property under applicable state laws and and this includes looking at the market value uh which play is placed on a list with all the properties in the county. That's the assessment role that I referred to earlier. Um and so this includes um how they will assess properties, include sales in the marketplace. Uh, if there's income generated by the property, um or it could be generated and then the cost to replace or construct a similar property. Um, other factors include looking at land use, different land use designations are are worth different values. Um, also the location, the size of the property and the condition, all go into those factors. Um, and lastly, with valuation, there are bound to be errors. Um so this is from the county themselves, the appeal success rate. If folks come in and appeal their property tax valuation, the success rate is nearly seventy percent. So um, one of the best rules of thumb to use is if you get your property tax valuation and ask yourself, could I sell this property with the assessed value? Then it's probably fairly fair. Um in in looking at properties, it it tends the general rule of thumb is that properties are probably assessed, the assessed value is probably less than market value. Um, so everyone's probably getting a pretty good deal. Um, to jump out of valuation and look at kind of a a breakdown of what a Provo citizens' property tax bill would look like for every dollar that they pay in property taxes, this is roughly the current breakdown. So every dollar that you pay in property taxes, fifty-seven cents would go to the school district, seventeen to Provo City, fifteen to the state, eight to the county and four to Central Utah Water. Um, so really the vast majority go into the school district. Um, and then this is just a, yeah.
Why does our money go to Central Utah when we don't use Central Utah?
That's a great question. Just for fun. Maybe that four could per- percent could bear five percent.
What does Provo City get from Central Utah as a?
Yeah, that that I'm not sure, but happy to look into that.
I guess. To the dam.
Yeah.
Things that nature.
Okay.
I'm sure they would have a a very long list of all the things that they give up.
And maybe they're right. I don't know.
But the proper Provo Water Users Authority pays into fees for like Deer Creek and things like that, separate from Central Utah. So, yeah, we need to fight them. Get that four percent back. That's a fun question, George.
George, can you go to work on that?
All right, all right. We'll we'll look into that. Um.
Gary might know.
But he does.
Oh, there we go. He's outside. Um, breaking Provo City's portion down for further. So we've got a number of different portions of our property tax, including uh our interest in sinking funds or for our bonds, for our bonded facilities. Um, general operations, which goes the general fund, and then the library portion of property tax. So it makes up that. Here it looks like eighteen percent. It's because they're rounded. I promise we can add. And then that that full seventy, seventeen percent of Provo City receives. Um, I mentioned this earlier, but this is really, um just to demonstrate how those rates work, as valuations go up, rates rates go down and if valuation. And if valuations were to go down, rates would go up, just the inverted, um and you can see from the start um on your right. You see the general fund operate operations rate has gone down over the last. Oh gosh, twenty fourteen, so the last ten years, um and you can see um. The reflective rate of how. Valuations have gone up, so they they mirror each other in that way. Um. I won't spend a long time on this, this is a very.
Eye chart.
This this is a very.
Hurts my eyes.
It's a very big chart, so this is um. Tax year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four from the states um. The state tax commission website, um it just shows. The revenue from each of the taxes and tax rates for Provo City, so you've got general operations. Uh interest in sinking or bond funds, library, and then we don't have a discharge of judgment rate, that was what if the. The city were to be sued, we could put that on. Put put the taxpayers on the hook for it, but that has. Fortunately not been the case.
Justin?
Mm-hmm.
What's a sinking bond again?
Uh so that's bonds, so any of our general obligation bonds, so we've got this building and the rec center.
And this is just a placeholder chart, right, Justin, this that doesn't have current.
No, so the most current is on the bottom, this is what we're we're waiting to be.
A new growth revenue.
Yep, the new growth.
Okay, where does that come?
Uh so that is supposed to be posted by the state, I believe, by the same time the assessment role right around end of end of May, so. They don't need much time for you to.
Yeah.
Look at this. Um. And then real quickly, just kind of jumping into the two, the two rates that we have. Or that the council's authority over, so that bond rate is only what. Would make up for our bond payments, we can't add an extra rate onto there, it's just uh what the state refers to as sufficient, so. They calculate that rate based off of our current bond debt uh and create that rate, so it stays fairly flat. Um but the two that the council and the city does have um. The ability to change are for the library and for uh the general fund for our general operations rate. Um so this little graph just shows the breakdown of revenues. Um at least in the current fiscal year um for the library, so you can see. Um roughly eighty seven percent of library revenue comes from property tax. Um as we see revenues for this upcoming fiscal year, um the actuals. We or for the current principal year for the actual, uh this will be. This will be larger because the property tax increased last year of roughly five hundred thousand dollars for the library, so. You'll see library is very dependent on on property tax and they've got some very small um other categories um. Book sales fees, vehicle taxes, so um.
And Justin, when is the library presenting to us, is that in two weeks?
It is in two weeks, and I believe Carla's, I saw her online, so she's.
Okay.
She's she's around if you have any questions. Um. So just to give you a kind of another visual, um these property tax rates have a statutory cap. So they can't, they cannot be. Uh the mill levy cannot be larger than the statutory cap and for the library, that's point zero zero one. Currently that rate is point zero 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 four four zero, so forty four percent. Of the avail the available taxing rate for the library is what is currently taxed for that library rate. And real quick, their revenues are roughly four point four million dollars, um the max would be roughly ten million dollars. Um again, as you can see, the library rate has has kind of precipitously. Decreased since the the renovation of the library when it was set at um. Near the top of the the mill levy, um and that is due to as valuations have gone up, the rate has gone down, but they've remained that same. Same uh revenue. Um. This similar chart just rev library revenue over the last twenty five years or so. In the blue line, the red line shows what um average inflation would have looked like, so three percent year over year. Um and so would have taken library revenue from roughly four million dollars to five million dollars. Um jumping into general operations rate, so this is the.
Sorry, Justin, can you go back to that?
Yeah.
So that uh means that the library is one million dollars less. Uh has one million dollars less buying power than it did in.
Twenty five years ago.
What's that?
They were they were near the max, I wanna say they were point nine something or.
The building of the. Building of the library or the refunding of the refishing. So there is a reason for it, I just don't know that there's a reason for it to be happy.
Well, there's a million dollar gap now, it's a good reason for it.
The million dollar gap though again was set. Back in two thousand from what I understood because they were going to refurbish that.
No, the rate has gone down since two thousand.
Right, right, and the gap if. What I'm saying is back in two thousand, they set it almost to the top of that from what we were told last year from what I understood. And the reason why they did that is because they were looking at building a new library and they wanted to make sure they had all of that. That funding available, and so right now where we're not looking at building a brand new library, I don't see that that.
I'm not saying we need to go to the maximum, I'm just saying what we're. By not adjusting the rate, we're a million dollars behind now.
I will say, so this this does not include the tax increase from the current fiscal year, just from. Uh. Revenues through FY twenty four, so the gap should have closed slightly. Um but as soon as we get those reported numbers for. Um the end of the fiscal year, we can update this.
Interesting to see that, Justin, thank you.
Um. Jumping into gen- general operations rate, so this is just a comparison of general operations rates. Um of cities in Utah county, you can see. Or right down there towards the bottom, just barely ahead of Eagle Mountain. Um and you'll see um. This is just a pie chart of revenues for the general fund, uh again for. From last fiscal, for FY twenty five, so uh the current fiscal year, um you'll see that. Um what is. Uh largely the most stable revenue source being property tax is our second lowest um. Lowest revenue and gosh, what is it, seven percent? Of city revenue or city general fund revenues come from property tax, where our uh least stable revenue source. Um being sales tax is our largest percentage of funding at nearly thirty three percent, so. Um again. Not. You can have the debate all day of which of which is better, I I won't. Playing to say which is, but um that volatility in the rate does create situations when you have. Um. Times of um either less spending or economic depression where you'll get more volatility in your sales tax rate. Where your um property tax rate remains stable. Um similar to the library, this is just an illustration of. The statutory cap um for general fund. For the general fund rate, which is point zero zero seven, and we are currently uh. Have a property property tax general fund rate of point zero 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 five six three, so roughly eight percent of what what we could. Uh that's again, not to say that it.
We can make.
Just because you can, you should, um but the uh uh currently there's roughly five point six million dollars. It's collected for the general fund and property taxes, um. And the maximum is just shy of seventy million dollars, so um. There is. Ability there, um but that is a apology just policy decision of whether or not to. Change those rates and and look at kind of different tax structures. Um. Again, same types of charts from um. The library fund, you'll see over the last twenty five years or so, the. Uh general fund rate has gone down due to. Valuations increasing exponentially, um. And so we've we've maintained a relative stable revenue source, it's been raised, um I think. Two years, two or three years out of those twenty five years, um there's been some minor changes, um. Uh but still. A large, large ability to change that if if that were desired. Um. And then the last chart is just to give this comparison of general operations property tax to relative to inflation, so. Um you're looking at. Current property tax revenue of roughly five point five million dollars, um. If it were to and to follow roughly three percent inflation over twenty five years, you're looking at six point five million dollars, so. Um. Yeah, just. Just some food for thought, so thought we'd run through that real quick. Again, just kind of put put the information out for the council, um and then. Um reminds you of the truth and taxation process. Um if there's a if there's a desire, either if the administration comes forth with. Um a proposed budget that includes a change in the tax rate or if the council desires to change the tax rate. Uh there are just some um deadlines we need to to think about and be aware of.
So Justin, are those dates accurate, just the year is wrong or are those last years?
No, they are, the dates are correct, they're all in statute, the. The year is wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Unless we can find Marty and fly.
Mm-hmm, alright.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yes. Um so yeah, a couple of. Um. Date requirements and and here's just another schedule, there there were several changes that were made during the legislative session this year. Um that require some additional modification, um nothing. Too crazy, maybe just a little annoying notifying, instead of just notifying the county, notifying the county. Tax division, the assessor and the. State tax commission, um some additional requirements for the notice, um but. That's that's about it. I wanted to run through quick, any questions on truth and taxation, property tax? Um we'll look into the Central Utah Water question.
Well, thank you, Justin, this will give us time to study this and be ready for June, councillor Bogdan.
I do have Gordon's answer, it is a federal law. For Central Utah Water, seven counties.
Were you federal or state?
He said it's a federal law.
Hmm, look at that.
That is with um. The seven counties that feed into Central Utah Water. Every municipality within that has to pay a fee to Central Utah Water.
Okay.
So it's nothing that we can.
Thank you. Thank you again, Justin.
No problem. Yes, it was that, my yeah, my homework's done. Um so I I I guess maybe um I think I know the answer to this, but if there was a, if there was a. Interest on this council to explore a possible cost of living adjustment to the property tax, I would certainly be interested, but I. I have not sensed that's the mood of this council and in the past, as a just as a reminder. Um we did it two years in a row, uh Dave Shipley was kind of the one who pushed for that. Um Bill Fillmore was very supportive as a method of helping the city become. A little bit less dependent on sales tax and more dependent on a more steady uh revenue source. Given how low uh our rate was, it seemed like um. At least making cost of uh living adjustments made some sense, but I know that last year that that conversation didn't take off, so I don't I don't wanna. Beat a bush that doesn't need beating, I just. Figure if if we're gonna meet those deadlines, we actually have to get that process going a little bit uh prior to that. Um I just think it makes a lot of sense, I know it's not a very popular thing, but I think continually not acting. On making those adjustments, just just makes the. Political mountain steeper and steeper every year for, uh and then you end up with like. The Utah county having to jump their rates twenty two percent in one year because. They haven't made any adjustments for thirty, so anyway.
Councillor Bogdan.
I do have a couple of comments on that. The one thing that worries me about that. Is we do have to pass a rap tax this year. And I don't necessarily wanna send a message when we have to pass a rap tax that. We're gonna increase your water, we're gonna increase your electricity, we're gonna increase these fees. Oh, we're gonna nail, you know, the top, we've gotta do this year. Now all of a sudden, there's, yeah, now all of a sudden, there's like no money from the residents and no.
Are you saying now is a good time or it's not a good idea?
I don't think now is a good time.
So it's a it's a ideal we're considering, just not the right time.
Yeah, I think we need to provide for our fire departments and we need to provide firefighters, right, and we're lacking nine firefighters. So I think that the money needs to come there, but I think we need to balance it right, and I think we need to do it right. And I just don't know that this is the year to do that, because we also have a rap tax that will go on the ballot. And they'll say yes or no, and if they're feeling pinched to maximum, I think the vote's gonna be no. And the bond, the huge bond by the school board is happening without a vote. Without a vote, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions and discussion, thank you. We need to move on to our final presentation before a a scheduled break. That will be by Brian Torgis Torgerson, our airport director. Who has an important date coming up on Monday, an important event.
Yes, thank you, and I apologize, I woke up with this, I feel fine, I. Likely not contagious, but anyway, I'll keep my, I'll keep my distance, so. Um consistent with the uh request from council office, um this budget's gonna, this presentation can be very simple, straightforward. Answering those questions that were important to you, um certainly if if I leave out any details that you hoped I included, uh just. Feel free to ask those questions. Um and so. First thing, um. We were asked to focus on things that that maybe we had asked for um and hadn't gotten or unfunded needs. Um the administration in this council's been very good to the airport, as you know, we've been back. Mid-year several times in the last few years, as we've gotten a picture of what our revenues look like and requested additional staffing. Um additional appropriations to cover things at the airport, and so. Um we're feeling pretty good um at the airport as far as having been funded what we what we need, um. And so um there are, however, um. Moderate increases to our budget as as we continue to expand and grow, ob- obviously our operation grows with that. And there's an expense to that, and there's also some new things that we're trying that. Um for example, one one thing we're struggling with right now is keeping our air traffic control tower staffed. Now, that's not a function of Provo City, that is a federal uh FAA contract. With a private entity to manage the tower, we own the tower and the facility. But the FAA contracts with a company called Serco to operate the tower. Now, we have not had a full tower staff in years, and part of that is cost of living. Um and other things that go into that, and so um. One of the things that's actually offset by a new fee um is is potentially providing a a living stipend for. Those controllers who um. Maybe sweeten the pot a little bit to get more applicants here in Provo, um we're already staffed short at our tower, um. You may not know, but we're only, our tower is only open from seven AM to nine PM. And that's normal operating hours, but because of the shortage of controllers, we're actually closing, they call it ATs ATC zero. Quite frequently, so we've uh as part of that, we've talked with our flight schools um. And through a new fee to our flight schools and landing fees, which we we charge landing fees, but historically have not charged for smaller aircraft. Uh but given the amount of of work that the flight schools are putting. Our controllers through, uh it seems like a a transparent and straightforward. Way to capture some of this um feedback, so so that's part of that adjustment, also. Um marketing has become extremely important in what we're doing at the airport, um. It's amazing to me how many people still don't understand that you can get on a plane in Provo, um. And I look at him and like, do you live under a rock or what, like where where have you been, but um. It's interesting. Uh right? So I don't really say that, but that's what I, so um anecdotally, we we uh. We hosted a a booth at Silicon Slopes. And six out of ten people that visited our booth, and this is you be new students, this is. Whomever else, yeah.
Um I have a friend who commutes from Ohio.
Um, I have a friend who commutes from Ohio, oh, Iowa here every weekend. And he's so excited about the Provo Airport, and it finally just came that he could do a plane, but I got a text on Saturday morning. It says I've been, it's been a lovely travel experience, Provo Airport, cannot say enough good about it, it started my day off right. And he's been doing this for years. It's a horrible commute. And he loves it. He said the security was so easy, he just can't say enough about it, and he's not a pleasant man usually.
Well, thank you, but a- a- again, back to Silicon Slope, six out of ten people who visit our booth had no idea you could get on a plane in Provo, and that. We're three years into this, and so, a- anyway, long story short, marketing is, is an important part of what we're doing. Uh, Explore Utah Valley, we have, uh, great partnership with them that helps with that. Also, Utah County. Is pitched in a, in a huge way to provide funding for that as well, so that's another one of those things. Another increase is, we feel like it's pretty important with a million people walking on our carpet every year and. Uh, all those things, we're going to have to replace some of that stuff here, um, for too long, so. We're, we're putting some money away, uh, which we haven't historically done, and so Jimmy calls that a sinking fund type. I, I don't know, um, but that's, that's another part of this, so, but all of these revenues are projected to be covered by airport revenues, um. Our revenues are looking really good, and months where we expect. Traffic to dip. Um, we're breaking records, and so, um, we know that won't always be the case, but for right now, um, we're feeling pretty good about how things. Are, are moving forward. Yeah.
You need to control that marketing because we cannot expand to twenty gates. We just don't have the funding.
Well, we don't have the space to can expand to twenty gates either, so, um, but yeah, for sure. Um, just a few fee changes, and we've wrestled with how many of these fees actually belong in a, in a consolidated fee schedule, but just want to make you aware of those. So much of what we do at the airport, um. We have to kind of gauge yourself with the surrounding airports so that we're not too high or too low. Um, there is some strategy in that, but. Um. So we are increasing our tie-down fees, our landing fees are actually set by contract at the moment with our airline partners. That's adjusted, um, based on CPI, um, at least for the moment, um. Soon as those contracts expire, we'll have a little more opportunity to, to increase those a little bit more. Um, electrical, electric vehicle charging rates, again, just, just kind of staying in line with airports of our size and scope.
A quick question on your electric vehicle charging.
Yeah.
Spots. So are those more short-term parking, or can people be parked there long-term?
So we have two of the, gosh, and forgive me, we have two fast charge stations in the visitor lot. But we also have eight long-term that can be there. Plugged in for a week while you're on vacation. I don't know how that works, now your battery doesn't blow up, but. Um, apparently it does, and it's just fine, but. You, those of you who drive those electric vehicles probably understand it better than me, but yes.
It just stops once you hit.
Just stops.
Whatever percentage you tell it to stop at, it will stop.
It'd be really nice if we could then say, okay, you're done, we moved the car, but don't quite have that technology yet, so.
Okay, so those in the long term are paying for whatever charge they use, and then they're paying for the parking.
The parking as well. Yep.
Um. Seems like that should be even more because you're not able to turn over those spaces like you need to.
Yeah, and, and I will point out, this twenty five cents per kilowatt hour is a little bit higher than. Say what energy is charging in their lot, um, and, and that's because of some of this. That we can't control, so. Um, another one, we get asked to film at the airport, um, we've tried that a few times, it's incredibly cumbersome, and so. We've really jacked up that, that cost to. Say if you really want to do it, and you really want to pay for it, we'll, we'll make it happen.
Because what is it now? What do you charge now, or you don't charge?
We do, it's just. These filming agencies don't even blink an eye, and so it's.
And they're high maintenance.
Yeah.
So. Filming for, for movies?
Yeah.
At the airport?
Yeah, we're in. Several Hall, Hallmark movies.
That your husband watches all the time? I had no idea, really?
Yeah, so it's, it's funny, there's one, there's one on Hallmark.
Well, they're using it now, they do a ton in Midway and in downtown Provo, and now they have an airport in Salt Lake.
They did one at my neighbor's house, George.
Wow, I just didn't know it was a thing in the airport.
Yeah, several of our airport operations staff are movie stars.
A lot of, a lot of, a lot of, like, departure scenes in Hallmark movies.
Yeah.
Rivals that are very emotional.
We've had luggage companies come and do kind of shoots for their, for their products, those sorts of things, and. We have to escort them, and it, it eats up a lot of our resources, so we want to make sure we're.
Yeah.
Almost discouraging that through the rate, uh, but it seems like.
He's paying.
A- a- at least they're, if they really want to pay for that, let's be honest, we're gouging them. But they don't, they don't seem to blink an eye, so. Um. Uh, yeah.
Ryan, I wouldn't say gouging because it really is disruptive, and you're pulling people away from their regular job.
Justified.
It's completely justified for the time and the disruption.
Absolutely. We don't want to incentivize it at all. It's, it's, we want to accommodate, but make it worth our time and effort, so. Um, and then, this is what I mentioned about funding it, whoops, I'm sorry.
We like it.
Um, funding the stipend for our air traffic controllers, um, that's about a seventy five thousand dollar a year. Uh, bump to our revenues, and obviously we'll be paying that out, so.
Ryan, do, do your employees have to pay to park at their?
No.
What was the employee part?
And so that's airline employees, that's, yeah, TSA, all of those.
Okay.
Um, employees. So anything that's parking in our employee lot, they pay a monthly fee, um, for that. Um, some of our key accomplishments, again, you all know a lot of these American Airlines, um, it's kind of been the big one. Um, that really changed the landscape of the airport, um, began service in October twenty four. We're now at sixteen non-stop destinations with. Over two hundred and eighty one-stop destinations through Dallas and Phoenix. Um, four hundred and forty-eight thousand plane passengers, almost nine hundred thousand total passengers. Um, there's a need for a gate five, which is why we are. Starting construction, which, uh, I hope you all are planning on attending on Monday, ten AM. Um, and I know you have day jobs, George, so we'll, uh.
Sorry.
We'll miss you and, and, uh. But just please know of our, uh, appreciation for all that you do and, and all the support, so. Um, this dates.
I mean, if there was a Hallmark movie being filmed at the same time, I might make an exception, I might cancel class.
I'm sure Channel Seventeen could, could figure something out, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, one you're all aware of, obviously, that there's a lot of focus on the terminal, what's happening commercially, but we also have. The airport, um, and its operations, so the snow removal equipment building is under construction. Um, you should see that going vertical here soon. New, two new private hangars, um, and then. As those of you who, who watch the airplanes take off, um, over two hundred thousand aircraft, craft operations, which. Is driving, um, that's flights, that, that's an operation is a takeoff or a landing, and so. Um. And then, thank you so much. In December, we added the two full-time positions. Um, this is just kind of our, our performance measures. Um, twenty twenty-three, these are calendar year, so. Um, keep that in mind as some, something get reported in fiscal year, but these are actually calendar year. Um, so twenty twenty-three actual deployments was four hundred and fourteen thousand. Um, twenty twenty-four. Wait, Jimmy, these are. This is the old one, so, uh, twenty twenty-four is four hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand deployments. Um. And then, uh, our target for twenty twenty-five is that five hundred and fifty thousand passenger employment, so. Um, with that. Any questions?
So four, four, eight, nine, seven, two, you didn't quite hit five hundred?
Didn't quite get there. Well, we didn't, I mean, we're fifty thousand short, but. Um, if, if we. Take the first three months of this year, and then equal. Uh, April through December of what we did last year, we'll be really close to that five hundred thousand, so.
All right, well, thank you, Brian. Appreciate your report and your great work. We'll see you on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now take a, a recess, re- recess and reconvene. One forty, around one forty-one. Forty-two for.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
The transportation utility fee dedication of funds and amending fees on the Provo City Consolidated Fee Schedule. Jimmy McKnight.
As you can see on the presentation, it says Vern Kessler here, we he he did most of the work on this with Charles Allen, who's here from Parametrics, our consultant. And he did such a great job, we let him go to Hawaii on vacation. So I'm presenting it instead today. But did a good job of creating this outline that steps through each each item we'll talk about today. We'll start with the history and go through some proposed changes and examples of of which which types are impacted the most. So the TUF, I think about a year ago, the council got pretty in depth on this as we talked about exemptions that were removed. It's been in effect for over 10 years and there've been lawsuits and court rulings that have occurred in the meantime, and as it currently stands, we have the ability to continue to charge this based on a Supreme Court ruling in 2003. The last two years of the state legislature, there have been attempts to pass bills that codify certain aspects of it, but not have passed to this point. And so we're anticipating this might continue again next year. We think the changes we're proposing all are in alignment with that and with potential changes that might come from the state. Some potential changes might require us to review it more often or provide certain exemptions that again till till now have not been authorized, but could impact us in the future. But based on what what we know today, we're, I guess we've talked about this a few times over the years, but we're now ready to to make some changes we we think are appropriate. So on the actual fee that's been charged historically, we did one rate increase in FY twenty four of five percent. And in addition, a combination of that rate increase and the exemptions that were removed, you've gone from about 2.2 million a year to 2.7. Then this is your first showing of the categories and the ADT, which is average daily trips. The next slide, I believe, shows examples, we thought it would be helpful, or we were told it would be helpful to to see some examples of of outfits in these categories. And so based on professional studies, nationwide studies of these trip generations.
I have a question about ADUs.
Okay.
So where do where do they fit? If you're a single family residential at an ADU, do you suddenly swap to become multifamily? Or do you not? Or does the other unit just not pay anything?
I'm not sure.
I don't think we captured the US media right now, so I don't think that's planned.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned, the our current revenue about 2.7 million dollars a year. As we look at that amount and how it compares to the need in the city, the need of the roads, we we take the approach with maintenance that the good roads cost less and by keeping them maintained, it keeps us from having to completely tear up the road and re repave. We keep we keep the surface in good order. It's it'll last longer and be cheaper. And so that's, I think I mentioned in our earlier budget presentation, that's the primary use of this is the maintenance of the roads on, you know, the bigger projects, not not necessarily potholes, but resurfacing and overlays of of existing roads and we do crack seals and and those type of maintenance to to maintain or continue the life of the road. And with our assessments that are done every few years and coordination with our consultant, we've determined that the our target amount for TUF maintenance funding is $4 million. And as I mentioned, we're currently at 2.7. And we'll talk about some of the some of the impacts and some of the changes that we feel will will make this possible.
And Jimmy, is this based on the study you got back? You got the study back yet? This is what we're talking about?
Yeah, so it it takes into account a few different things. It's not just there's no magic bullet that says this is the magic amount you needed.
But this is after getting the study back.
Yeah, so it takes into account this this study is part of it, or most recently done in in 2022 that we do through Utah State University's LTAP, I'm not sure local technical assistance program, I believe, that comes and does an assessment of the roads with visual inspection of the roads and determines our remaining service life. So this remaining service life are also high as good because if you have a high service life remaining, then you're in good shape. And their their recommendation is for us to be within between 12 and 15 years. As you can see, as we've done these studies over the years, as we've implemented the the TUFs, we've we've gotten within that desirable range, but we haven't been able to stay there. Part of the reason we've some, one of the things we've done to be able to to get there that has been hard to be consistent is supplementing the TUF with capital capital funds from BNC and engineering funds and and you know, when under this philosophy, the good roads cost less, it makes sense to do that at times. But when we use the the transportation dollars that are intended for capital projects to supplement the maintenance funds, then it just it's a trade off of you know, fewer capital projects like you know, a lot of the sidewalks projects that have been mentioned is is probably from the council that are are competing with with that funding when you use it for for maintenance. So I don't know if this is, it feels a little too early to jump into this, but essentially going from 2.7 to 4 million dollars, part of the reason we're we're planning, we're proposing to do this is to limit the the capital funds that are being used for for maintenance to get the TUF to where it's funding the maintenance program without using the the BNC funds. The other thing that is upcoming is is some of the the changes we want to make to the code related to what the funds can be used for. One of the things that we we think would be appropriate use for the TUF money is the replacement of traffic signals. They're part of the the transportation system. They they make it so, you know, they they impact traffic, obviously. And to have this be allowed and dedicated for that use as well, we think is an appropriate use and it's part of our justification for for making this change. So we're proposing like like we talked about in with the other utilities, we've we've looked at phasing this in over three years to minimize the impact. You know, for a residential, a single family home would between, I think it's 52 cents in the first year, 58 and 65 or so. And what this would allow us to do is is to get that funding from from 2.7 to four over three years. And one of the things that I didn't mention earlier that we're proposing with this implementation is for this and the other and and the water rates to go into effect September 1st. So they would all happen at the same time and be after the the high water usage of of summer peak.
Counselor McKay.
I do think it's important to recognize that when we looked at this 10 years ago and the studies came back, we were told our residential A should be like six bucks a monthish. I know that like Pleasant Grove is six bucks a month a month than like we are already really low and even you going up to 2028 is still below what the pricing was supposed to be 10 years ago. So these prices are still very conservative. Which is which is great. I just want to point out that these aren't crazy numbers.
Yeah, and by removing the exemptions, it allows you to have a lower rate for for everyone instead of a higher rate for those that.
Yeah, I think this is great.
It's played into it as well.
Jimmy, how in your study, how much of that was taken into account neighboring cities? You mentioned Pleasant Grove.
We we look at that just to
Springville and Orem.
We look at it to see where where we think compared to them, but you know, their their transportation or the status of their roads is is unique. And I think when Pleasant Grove was the the subject of the lawsuit because theirs was so high, they had applied it to everyone. They didn't have categories like this. But it's because the roads had gotten in such bad condition. And so you know, when we compare against some other cities, we're we're a lot lower, but it's because we've I think we implemented it sooner. You know, we, I don't know, maybe where we started was was better than where they started. There's a lot of factors that play into that, but we do we do compare with others and I think when when we looked at the the laws that have been proposed, they seem to be using us as, I don't know, I can't say the words as a good example, but it seems to be targeting the other cities that aren't and applying them this way and and saying you need to apply them based on a trip generation like we do already.
And I think you make a really good point. We have been used as a beacon with this as far as being a good example. It does make me nervous changing the scope of how we use the money at all. Actually, it does make me nervous to use it for street light. What do they call it? The the traffic signals? Because it could be said, you know, it doesn't matter how like no cars are touching the traffic signals. I don't think traffic signals get worn out by more cars going underneath them. I don't know, I just, we're, I feel like we're so lucky this tough didn't get taken away from us this legislative session. But I really want to be careful. And I think this is a completely appropriate increase. It's very conservative. It is based on data. And I think expanding the scope is the one thing that might, I just don't want us to do anything that could question legit legitimacy of it and be a case for us to lose the funding and even on a state level.
I do have a question along with that on the traffic signals. So my understanding is that as the signals age, you know, the the components can't even be replaced anymore. You have to replace the whole thing. But is there is there differential wear and tear on a traffic signal based on the volume, like how often it has to flick on and off?
So the Gordon Hay public works. Adding the signal is a little bit of high brain child and I'll tell you why we did it, but I'm also comfortable with the idea of not including it. I I see the signals as very well connected to traffic volume, which this whole thing is is how much traffic there is in the city, how much do you treat it to a specific type of land use in the sense that as volumes go up, you warrant signals specifically for those things. The problem I saw, and there's other ways of fixing it, is that while we had focused a lot on roads, you can see the hiding level maintenance on the roads are signals. We had not done a good job of replacing them. So what we can do as we increase the TUF is use BNC road funds or other kinds of things. And probably you'll see us look to increase the amount we're putting each year. I'm thinking we need to put about 200, 250,000 a year to our signal replacement. So we have an alternate way to do it. It doesn't have to be through TUF. So the council's much more comfortable, and I concur that we've been successful with the courts and in the court of public opinion by leading this wholly and completely for road maintenance. We're we're fine with that recommendation as well.
Thank you.
So along with the dollar amount changes, and like we talked about the traffic signals was one change we were proposing to the ordinance by ordinance to the code. So this item two would be an addition. If we decide to keep it like Gordon said, that that can be determined whether we do that or not. Item three would be similar to how state code allows for impact fee studies to be paid for by impact fees. We think it would be appropriate to allow us to use the TUF money to to pay for these studies that we do for you know, to pay for the remaining service life evaluations. And you know, the anything that that helps us determine what the rate should be and how it's applied. And how how it's how well we're doing with with objectives of with the money. And then four, similarly, as we talked about on the water rates. You know, there are there are costs associated with administering the program that in the past, we haven't been able to charge this. So and you know, if if someone in engineering is is managing the program, it's it's not paid for from TUF. It's because in the past, it was only allowed for the the maintenance. So just another example of administrative costs that we feel like if they're associated with the TUF, we think it's a appropriate use of of funding as well.
I think you're probably right. I still just like want to be so careful. Like I think number three is the only one we should include because that's been included in every single bill. I mean, everyone wants a study. That's just part of the that came out of the court case, too. So the study needs to be done. And that's what you've done every 10 years. That's been kind of the standard so far and they made, you know, but that is something that's been in every bill and that everyone agrees on. I think it would admit reasonable administrative costs is completely reasonable. But it's something someone could take advantage of, someone could get worked up over like I just think we have, we should be using our regular budget for those things and really maximize our tough and not put anything in jeopardy.
Exactly. Yeah, Brian. Jimmy, when you, so the numbers you showed a minute ago include those all three of those additions, right? And were they? What was the methodology? Were they just apportioned in the same proportion with the rest and everything else is?
Yeah, so I don't know that we had a, we I think we had a specific dollar not for the the traffic signals, but I don't think we had factored in a certain amount for the each of those items.
The reason why I'm asking, the thing that I'm thinking is, and again, most conservative approach is to just not not include them as counselor McKay is indicating. The other thing that occurs to me, though, is that I think you make a good case for why they are part of the utility. And if you if you make this analogous to other utilities, I mean, we do those things, we charge for poles and energy and stuff, but we do it in a slightly different way in the sense that we have a base fee that's the same for everybody. And then you get charged for your usage on top of it, right? And so kind of as a middle ground, it occurs to me that if you want, if we again, for the council to decide if they want to include these things, but they want them to be thorough, that they want to take a step towards making them challenge proof, even though it makes the rate more complicated. I think one of the ideas I think one of the ideas here might be to take those extra things. And put them into a base rate that's the same for every single user. So nobody can assert that they're not using it enough to get uh charged. Do you see what I'm saying? So those things might go into a base rate with your usage charge on top of it, just as an idea.
So we're defining the the numbers they gave us with a change without having administrative costs at all.
At least the as I as I understood, at least the uh. Um street light numbers are already included in these, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
See, these numbers are already lower than the original numbers that the salt gave us ten years ago. So I really see how that's possible. It seems like we can do just the rows, but just these numbers.
Well, and isn't there that whole matter of fungibility, right? So we have dedicated funds for this thing, which means it frees up money to spend in somebody. Some other area that's related. So.
Right.
So I I can we go back to the screen?
Yes.
But the, yeah, I I I I'm with. Counselor McKay with number two being taken off. I I think the other two, though, seem like they, I mean, we we. Have fees for. You know, a parking permit program or other kinds of things that include administrative costs in the fee. So I don't know why that seems like that would put us in any kind of legal jeopardy if we said, you know, there. This requires, I I just don't have a sense of how much administrative. Costs we're talking about, but if we're just talking about a little portion of it, that that. That seems easier to make the case than the traffic signals. Um so I I at least feel comfortable just striking number two altogether. The other the other two feel like they're pretty reasonably tied to. Um what number one requires. Because you can't really operate, improve and maintain city streets if you don't do studies and if you don't have administrators doing that work. So. Uh Brian, isn't isn't that pretty? Pretty logical on a legal basis to say that that's.
Yes.
What we're talking about.
Yeah.
We need we need money to pay for the ability to maintain, operate, repair, upgrade.
Yes, I I don't have a concern with that as far as the justification of including it. Uh kind of alluding back to my. Former comment, I suppose we might need to have a discussion about how we allocate it, but. Concerns about including it per se.
I I'd be open to if you think there's a better or different way to allocate it, I'd be certainly open to that.
I think.
It seems like it 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 just seems to me like it's within the spirit of. What the toughest for to include three and four.
And I I I guess, thinking through what I said before, I think three and four. It's easier to argue why the proportions are the same. I think two is the one that was kind of triggering the base rate thought in my head because it's the one that. It seems like there are concerns about whether we can justify that usage. In in is anyway tied to the traffic signals. That's just me, I'm not the expert, so. Counselor Bogdan.
I was just gonna say, I agree with Council McKay. To me, it's better to stick with something that has been working, especially where we're under the microscope, rather than to lose it. Because if we lose it.
You know.
Now we've got to figure out how to put that on the backs of citizens and we don't have some of these other. Ways of getting money from some of those that we can't tax, right?
Well, I mean, this is paid for by our citizens.
Right, right. But if we got rid of this, we'd have to figure out another way, like raise taxes or raise something to get this money back.
But I I just want to make it clear that this fee doesn't save our people from paying money. It would just be.
Yep, I agree with that. They would pay, they would pay less this way than if we did it through.
Well, they'd pay less if we're able to not have exemptions for certain types.
Exactly.
That's what we're looking at.
Yeah, I don't know that any of the legislation has threatened the existence of it, just the the application of this.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Jimmy. Anything else?
Would you say, well, this, I've included an ordinance that made these changes that we can um. We can adjust if you want to move forward with it in two weeks. Uh the other other thing I would mention, just because we've talked about it today is. Um the ordinance does include all three years. Um approving that with the ordinance, like I said, September first would be the first year would be. And so, you know, again, that doesn't bind the future councils, but which they could take it out, but that's that's what's currently in the ordinance that I've drafted.
I think this is great, and I'd make a motion that we go ahead with the schedule as put out for the next three years. Just taking out number three and number, no, taking out number two and number four. I don't know, I I guess I'm flexible on the reasonable industry of costs. If everyone really thinks it's a hundred percent, doesn't cause any more risk.
Didn't sound like, Brian, you felt like it would.
I mean, they have it in HUD stuff, they have in governments, federal government stuff, they have it in. State government stuff, so. So I guess just go ahead with the schedule as posted for the next three years minus number two.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Counselor McKay and with a second by Counselor Hanley to um. Adjust the proposed ordinance for Council Row in two weeks. Um okay, and I'll call for a vote.
Sure.
Just discussion. I don't know if this merits more discussion or more feedback from public works. I guess. Right, Counselor McKay, if I'm understanding your your motion, right? I get why you're saying, why you're saying it doesn't make sense to you that the numbers would need to lower if we take the traffic signals out. But I would say if the people who did the study are telling us that they included the traffic signals in the numbers, then I think we need to take them out. Or I think we risk challenge.
So we did do a study on the true cost and the studies came back with lower numbers than.
So if you go back to the chart, you see that four million dollar number. That that is a number to do our roads. And what we have been doing over the last several years is putting C and B road funds or other. General funds kind of money into road maintenance. Um we did not go back and say. So that four million dollars does not have a calculated component for signals. It's just that. We know that's for roads and 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 nowhere did we come out and say, we need X dollars for signals. We were thinking if. We had a road section and we don't need, we would be able to put it for signals, but. Again, I think that's.
Okay.
Okay, great. Then I go ahead with my original motion.
All right.
Very good. We'll call for a vote then. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Creightonson?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
And Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
The motion passes six votes to zero with Counselor Hope and Excuse. Thank you, Jimmy. We'll move then to our next presentation, which is by the Energy Department regarding their fiscal year twenty twenty six budget. This will be presented by Scott Bunker.
Are we gonna get a visual aid? Or candy? Love it.
Well, counselors, thank you. We're grateful for this opportunity to to present present you tonight. We have a presentation obviously put together. Um we're gonna, well, I'll just go ahead and start through it here. Obviously, just reminding you of our goals, that we have an on on an annual basis, you know, to be the most reliable power provider in the in the nation. Uh we were just recently awarded um from the APPA that we are on the top ten percentile. Of that. And so while we're not at our goal yet, we're inching up there every year and getting better and better. And then, of course. In our mission statement, Naimika George for this. Reminding you know, we are trying our best to be proactive and stewards of the environment, um something that we've been working and talking a lot about lately. And we're not going to cover a lot today, um just because of the time, but I'm going to go through some slides really quickly. Talk a little bit about our strategic planning, um the reliability and sustainability, and then I'll turn it over to Charlie. She's going to talk to you. Uh but about affordability in our proposed budget. These three issues, second, the second, third and fourth ones, reliability, sustainability and affordability. That's something that we're pushing all the time. Wherever we go, anything that we do, we're telling our employees. We need to be focusing on at least one, if not all three of those issues when we talk about it, even if it's just a reel for for something that we're. Presenting to the public, et cetera. We want to make sure that we're. Getting that message out there all the time. And so Charlie will talk about affordability and proposed budget and. And present our proposed budget as you've already received as well tonight. So. But I will be going through some of mine a little quicker to give Charlie a little extra time. But if you have any questions, please stop me. Somebody has you've you've seen, you heard some of this information. And so I don't know that it's going to be that big of a deal, but this one is obviously the first one. These are the four questions that we were asked. To answer for you specifically, um are there any unfunded or un- underfunded needs and proposals that need to be funded? Um and we're right now just requesting one full-time equivalent position that is an electrical engineer. We have. One engineer that's going to be retiring in the next one to three years. We're not quite sure yet. It's based on some factors that we're negotiating with him. And then also even our senior, our engineering manager will be retiring within the next four to five years. And so we need to get an engineer on place. It takes at least two to three years to be able to train them. And more than train them and help them, give them the time and the opportunity and projects to learn our system. And I'll give you a prime example of this. You are all aware of the outage that we had on South State about a month ago. Um when the the buildings were were set on fire by an arsonist and it affected our power system. We had to replace two power poles and some conductors. Um at the same time that that all went down, we had issues with our radio system and the city's phone system. And if Ted hadn't had the institutional knowledge he had in his head. You know, we would have been in 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 back deploying out the the paper maps, et cetera, to know exactly what circuit was what and to where to switch from where to. What substitution to switch to which substation. And because of that institutional institutional knowledge at TAD and Alfonso have. Um we were able to get the power back on within minutes to over four thousand of those customers and only twenty. Were out for about another two hours. And so it's it's absolutely critical that we get someone on and we get him trained. And so that's why. That's the only really big ask that we are having this year as far as our our own budget is concerned. Um then as far as are there any services you wish to fund but could not know, that doesn't apply to us, as you know. And then are there any fees within your department which do not provide a full cost recovery? Um you know, our service connection fees and pick fees do not fully cover our costs. Uh but we'll be also re- be requesting, you know, later this year a rate increase to cover. Our four percent increase of power costs that have come in from U M P A this year. We met with them in 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 our meeting last uh month. And they presented with us that our cost outlook is looking like about a four percent increase on those power costs. And so in order to accommodate that, we're going to have to have a rate increase, a small one. We're hoping, you know, two to three percent, most likely three. Um and then are there any appropriations appropriations outside of the two thousand twenty five budget? There are none. Um and then requests that will increase ongoing operations and maintenance costs. Again, just that one supplemental F T for that electrical systems engineer. Um is our big ask. Um. Everything else, I think we're we're pretty pretty well covered. Um and then any other other current budget constraints. And the answer to that is no. So any questions um before we move on to this? And then, of course, number seven, current performance measures, you're all very aware of this, especially those of you that attend our our energy board meetings. Um every energy board meeting, we 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 review these numbers with our energy board and we walk through all of our K P I's with them. Um from something as simple as our safety concerns that are going on, any accidents or injuries that we've had with our personnel. To to our financials, our our affordability, the days cash on hand to where our our current fund balance is at. Um and then on down to our sustainability programs, we review those with them as well. And then, of course, last of all, is our reliability. And going over them with all of our indices for reliability.
So about the days cash on hand at at one eighty, is that uh by statute or is that just best practice? I never seen discussion about that.
Yeah, it's just best practice. Um I think it all revolved around some discussion. Charlie went to a an APPA conference and they're recommending. The APPA is, you know, three hundred sixty five days cash on hand. Um but I think that's more in line with areas like Florida or the Midwest where you have a lot of hurricanes or tornadoes or large. Natural disasters that are really causing them some financial constraints. We felt in meeting with our board and the discussions that we had. That a hundred and eighty days is probably the best goal for us and what we face here. And so we're we're really, really comfortable with that number. So um any questions so far? And then, of course, we're asked for our our department accomplishments. We just wanted to highlight two. Two of our big accomplishments that we're very proud of, of course, is because of our positive financial outlook, we've been able to maintain our double A rating. Uh which is which is huge. You know, U M P A is looking at some new resources. That could be coming online in the several years from natural gas plants to to more solar, to more hydro. Um this allows them to go out and save millions of dollars on those projects. And so we're we're looking. Forward to that fact that we can maintain that that bond rating. Um it's a big, it is a big deal for us. And then, of course. Because we've been very strategic in the past with past with rate increases. You know, trying to do all that we can to maintain our workforce at a at a smart level and not having employees where we don't need to utilizing. Technology to replace employees. Um we've been able to get our fund balance up to forty one million dollars. And so. We worked hard on that. Charlie Charlie's worked hard on it and it's it's something we're we're very proud of. So two of our biggest accomplishments for there. A lot of others that we could share, but those are two that we thought were the most important at this juncture. And as you know, um we've uh we, last year, I think we had sixty six, sixty seven employees. Sixty five employees. Um we're going to be going up to sixty nine employees. That includes the three that we inherited for the Parks Department with the street trees. And then that um that one electrical full-time engineer, if it's approved in the budget, would raise us from the sixty five employees to sixty nine. But we've we've tried hard for the last twenty years. Matter of fact, in our discussions with administration, you know, and looking at strategically, what can we do to cut? Um you know, to make sure that we're we're very wise with any rate increase that we do propose, that we cut everything we can before then. And we look at our personnel, it's hard to cut anymore. Um you know, just we we've got about as lean as we can. And so we're we're pretty happy with where we're at. Um and then, of course, for reliability sake, obviously, our big C our C I P projects are. Our biggest investment. We've spent sixty million dollars in the last ten years on these projects. And we're going to be spending more um in this next year, and as you've seen in the budget. With uh the Gillespie Substation at the mouth of the canyon, not actually at the mouth, that's Hale, but just up on the the right side by the horse trailhead. Um we're going to be, we we are now getting transformers and a lot of that equipment coming in for that substation. We've been planning this for three years now. And that 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 equipment's finally coming in. And so this next year, we're going to be expending a lot of our C I P budget up there at that substation. And so that's going to take a significant amount. In addition to. Um the that will include the one thirty eight K V transmission tie up there. We're getting a new new transformer, upgrading it as well. It's going to make that substation much, much more robust and benefit our entire system as it is. Um. I will just brag, you know, when we had that big outage down there with those apartment buildings that were on fire, we have a very robust system. And so because of the excess capacity that we have at each substation. We had that fire and, like I said, within minutes, we were able to transfer all of that load to another substation. And get all those people on except for twenty that were directly affected and they were back on within two hours. And so this is another. Um step in us continuing to make sure that our system is robust as we can. And in the near future. Um Draper Substation has a transformer that we're going to be replacing. We're in the middle of a bid, some some fun some fun bidding with that one. Um bids came in. Um we paid for that same time transformer about six years ago, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The lowest bid was two point two million. So we went back to the companies and said, this isn't going to cut it. And so they're resubmitting bids. And trying to work with us to get it lower. We just said we're not going to be able to do it. That transformer is six years old. You know, they have a fifty year lifespan. Our crews take really good care of it. It's it's in great shape. I won't say that it's not. It really is, but it's to the point where. We better start getting ready to replace it just in case something happens. And so that one, and then also down at our big. Big substation on South State, Tanner Substation is going to need some changes in the next couple of years as well. And so with that and some of our features. We got a lot of work to do. And so you'll be seeing in the next few years, a lot of a lot of that C I P budget that we've been. Getting asked for years, why aren't you spending? Why aren't you spending? Now the equipment's coming in and we can spend. So gratefully, gratefully, the. That uh supply chain is getting a little better in some areas and not so much in others, but it it's good. And again, as far as reliability, just again, re- reiterating the fact that we're in the top ten percent in reliability in the United States, something that we're really proud of. Another thing as far as i- is we kind of pivot to sustainability because of time. Um. Some of you are very familiar with this, but you know, back in two thousand twenty, this is where our our portfolio was, wasn't as diversified as we like. Uh but just with your financial portfolios, you want a nice diversified one with our our power resources as well. Um we are really grateful for where we're at now this year, you know, as you look at that pie, how much it's become much more diverse. And we've shifted a lot away from coal. And that resource to to a lot more solar. Um the cogeneration plant at B Y U has been a great plant because it was a. Dual cycle. It's also considered a renewable resource as well. And so that one is is a great resource for us as well. And then, as you know, our hydro. Is always huge, but of course, with the droughts in the last few years, our percentage has dropped from twenty four percent in two thousand twenty to twenty percent there. And it looks like for this year, at least this next year, we're going to be maintained about that. Um the 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 snowpack this year was 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 better than they were forecasting, frankly.
Um at the U M P A in uh St. George, we uh there was some talk about nuclear. Is there, does U M P A look at? Any nuclear uh potential? I mean, that's just, that needs to be part of this.
Absolutely. That's and especially what's what's happened with the state legislature this year. Matter of fact, even last summer, we were talking about it more because the Biden administration at that time had. Absolutely. That's and especially what's what's happened with the state legislature this year. Matter of fact, even last summer, we were talking about it more because the Biden administration at that time had re-. Reduced some of the regulation on nuclear plants. It wasn't as lot, but it was some. Um, cuz that's where the bulk of the costs come to build those plants. Matter of fact, the ones they're doing up in Idaho. They spend as much money now getting the permits from the federal government as the plant will cost to build. And so they're just trying to get that reduced and Governor Cox has been working a lot on that with his team. And so that's, we've been having a lot of discussions about that because that, if if we can move that direction, that will help us a lot. And. The next discussion item, data centers, I think is one of those that is is forcing that issue too. Because there's just only so much of some example of resources out there. And so, yeah, great question. Any other questions on our resource mix? I think you're all probably pretty familiar with you, probably tired of hearing me brag about it. And so, of course, our shared solar um resource and then our eighty megawatt solar power plant. Like I mentioned, there's hopefully in the near future, some more discussion that we'll be having about some additional solar and hydro. Um, and then, of course, our our. Our. Program that we brag a lot about is our nature shade program. This is our trees that we we give away, that we plant, you know, thirty-four thousand trees. Um, that sequester a lot of carbon. And I think people miss under, miss us or. Underestimate the benefit that trees can provide. I bet of all of our, I shouldn't say that, I know of all of our sustainability programs, this is one that is probably one of our biggest as far as carbon is concerned.
Do we still have all of the funds from that tree planting grant?
We do, yeah. Thanks for asking. Yes, we we do. It was taken away. I I shouldn't say that. It was put on hold. And then they came back and said, yeah, this is, this is a legitimate, a good, a good use of these funds. And so they let us keep. We've already expended about eighty thousand dollars of that. So we've got about two hundred ninety thousand left. And it's it's great, so. And of course, you're very aware of our lead goal building in campus that we're we're very proud of and continue to work on. Our green exchange program is becoming more and more successful. We added chainsaws this last year. And this year, they're they're gonna, we we know that that a lot of people are already applying and wanting to to take part in that as well. And then our conserve program, our shared solar programs also. This is the shared solar, I want as one I'm gonna hire right now. You know a lot about the conserve one and the rebates for heat pumps and 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 more efficient hot water heaters. Um, but with our shared solar program, Becky and Jenna are here with us today. Um, they have been working hard. We've, they've identified about fifteen thousand customers. That immediately would benefit from shared solar. And so they are sending an individual letter to each of those customers as well as an email. With their specific information of their bill and exactly how much money they will save. And so we're hoping through their efforts that we're gonna encourage people even further. You know, next to going and knocking on people's door. I don't know what else to do to, I don't know what else to do to encourage them. Right, that's exactly right. That might be the next step. Maybe when you and I retire, George, we can go, let's go do it. But we're excited about that cuz they're putting a lot of time and effort into this and we think it's gonna pay us some good dividends and really get that program moving as well. So. We're we're excited about it. And then, of course, our streetlights. This is one thing we we cross the six thousand limit for the number of streetlights that we now support throughout the city. Where I are changing them all out to LED. As we need to be replaced, they're all getting replaced and changed. Um, we did get a grant. We're not sure where it's at yet to to be able to do more solar lighting. Um, but where it makes sense, we're also installing installing solar street lighting as well. They're just not as bright and they're not as effective and as long lasting yet. And so they're not quite, but in some areas, they're really making a big difference for us where we couldn't have lights at all, especially.
Now, unless are you just changing the bulb? Are you changing the whole fixture?
The whole fixture.
So when you're changing the fixtures, are you doing ones that help direct the light?
It's all dark sky.
Okay, good.
All of our lighting for the last, I don't know how many years now, it's probably about the last six or seven years is all dark dark sky compliant. So, all of those on Center Street, University Avenue, we change dark sky.
Dark sky. So there's less of the light. So maybe you could see the stars when you hike up a little bit?
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're making some great success on that. We we have a full, full-time streetlight technician and he's replacing those all the time. He does a great job, so. We're very happy with that. Just wanted to hit real quick before we turn this over, our twenty thirty goals. As you know, was to reach sixty percent of our resource mix as renewables. Um, we're currently at forty-nine percent. To reach the next, the last portion of that is gonna be tough before twenty thirty. But like I mentioned before, there's some 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 potential options on the on the table that I think are gonna. Gonna help us get there. And so we're really excited about it. If we can get it moving. Hydro, maybe some more solar. It'll help us get to that as well. Yeah. UMPA has got their feet in a couple of fire right now. Matter of fact, one I can announce, it's it's a hydro one of Diamond Fort Canyon. They just got the. Contract to to build some hydro up there. It's a great hydro project. Um, it's on the Central Utah Waters big pipeline. A water that the biggest benefit to this one is that water comes when there's a drought. When they need more water in the valley, they ship the water through that pipeline and it comes. And so. Usually in a drought, where where our hydro numbers are dropping. This will help increase our hydro numbers during the drought as well. And so it's 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 a unique one. And right now, they're talking anywhere between. You know, I think sixteen megawatts, clear up to maybe thirty plus. So we'll see. See where that goes. And then there's some potential for some more solar that we've been really working hard on as well, so. And then, of course, a big one, reducing our carbon footprint. The goal was fifteen percent between now and two thousand thirty. We've we far surpassed that. We're at twenty-nine percent at the end of last year and will continue to just beat that. And that's our goal.
Have you had any um further conversations with BYU about that? Or is that too premature to talk about?
Uh, I I can just say we have, yeah.
Okay.
Last week is the latest.
Cause that's.
Actually, I I take that back. Yesterday was the latest.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, we're working really hard with them as well. They've got some sustainability goals that they wanna meet. And some other things that we're working with them on as well with their cogeneration. Hopefully, we can make that happen too.
Great.
So with that, I'll turn it over to Charlie. Yeah, any other questions?
Pull back to the picture. Um. How much expansion can you capacity? I mean, could you double, triple, quadruple this or does it reach a? An undesirable size?
I think right now where it's at with the property they have, I don't think they can increase the size there. I think they're looking at other location. So. Yeah, and some of that's in conjunction with the lights.
Okay, so we're looking at a general fund contribution of about eight point two million this year, based on our revenue projections that include a rate increase. And as you know, it's eleven percent of our uh operating expenses. And we also transfer back three million dollars and charge backs to the general fund. Those two line items combined is a fifteen percent of our operating expenses.
Charlie, you said an increase over fiscal year twenty-five?
It is. By. Oh. I'm sorry, I think it's farther in the presentation. I'll be able to tell you exactly. Uh, another benefit we've offered to the city is that we've lent out over twenty-four million dollars to other funds since fiscal year twenty. Most reason of which was the three and a half million dollars to the airport garage project for their uh snow clearing vehicles. And uh, it's been a benefit to both the other funds and to us getting that interest revenue from them. Yeah, we're sitting at about nine million out of that last loan. A lot of this has been paid back over those years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Over at work, supported by Provo Power. Brian and I should.
And here, along with our affordability, this chart, you can see the yellow line is Provo Power's rates over the past twenty years. Since two thousand four, our rates have increased by about twenty-four percent. Uh, the black line is the Consumer Price Index, which has gone up by over uh sixty percent in that same time. And that top gray line is the national power, like national average of power costs, which has increased by almost a hundred percent in that same time. So we feel really good about the value we're providing to the citizens of Provo, trying to keep our rates as reasonable as possible. Here you can see our residential rate comparison with some of our big comparables. Uh, other cities and uh Rocky Mountain Power is in there. Keep in mind, this is current rates. Rocky Mountain Power has asked, has asked for at least eighteen percent increase to rates across the board. So their spot will jump a lot higher. Uh, the two red lines, that's our current Provo rate and our proposed new rate. The way we've structured this rate increase is that it won't affect the average customer. They will see zero change to their bill. We're lowering the first tier, raising the customer service charge so they balance out. And most of that increase on residential customers will come into the second and third tier. Here you can see our. A small commercial customers. Again, we are some of the cheapest power of all of our comparables. This rate increase would jump us up slightly ahead of Salem, so it would be the second cheapest instead of the cheapest, but. Now here with our large commercial rate. We again staying about in the same position, looking for a very minor rate increase. Same with BYU, the cheapest industrial option out there, mainly because of our coincidization policy, which keeps their rates. Quite low compared to everyone else. Including Rocky Mountain Power, who's right there in the middle. Again, going to be jumping up at least eighteen percent next year. So onto our budget. We are looking at a three million dollar increase in revenue from fiscal year twenty-five. Most of that is due to the rate increase and also projected growth. Uh, we are. Hoping the rate increase will pass because otherwise we would not be posting a surplus. We would be looking at a deficit. And with our CIP spending coming up, that would be very difficult for us to build back our fund balance.
So that estimated revenue increase is based on the proposed rate.
Based on the proposed rate increase, yes. Starting in September, so excluding two months in the analysis, but.
I'm sorry, so could we, yeah, thank you. So without the four percent, um. It's, it's break even? I mean, does four percent get us a break even? Even, where's four percent?
Four percent would about break even slightly below, so a deficit where we'd have to dip into fund balance for operational spending rather than just CIP spending.
So at four percent, you're at that place?
Yes.
What's your other revenue? Is that like whole franchise fees or interest from lending out money or?
Uh, some of that, also uh impact fees, aid to construction. And uh developers have to pay us for the work we do for their developments. And uh those have stayed fairly steady. We are hoping to increase our impact fees and um. Uh, service connection charges because those aren't covering costs currently. Um.
Are you doing a study on those fees now?
Yes, uh, we're, we've started an impact fee study and we've also submitted. When council requested everyone review their fees a few months ago, we went through that process as well. With our connection fees and came up with a a number that would actually cover costs.
What kind, what's your timing on that?
The impact fees?
Well, your timing on recommended increases.
Um.
Is it six to twelve month kind of thing or six to twelve week kind of thing?
Um, we could have the impact fees based on uh. Whenever we go through the process with Science Bank, uh, we've done the analysis on our end, but we need them to verify it. Uh, and then as far as the.
Just wait for. We're gonna wait for them to verify all of our numbers and make sure that we're very intact.
Yeah.
If there's a step approval.
And the the reason I'm asking is, uh, could that offset a four percent increase?
No, no, not.
Yeah.
No. It would be maybe a couple hundred thousand dollar increase.
Cause it's in that, it's one portion of that smallest section.
Yeah. So here's the breakdown of where our revenue comes from. Forty-six percent is from our commercial customers. We have about twenty large commercial customers within that and then the rest are uh small commercial customers. Then thirty-eight percent comes from residential, twelve percent from BYU. And four percent from those other aid to construction, impact fees, service connection fees, all of the above. And Becky, come on up. It's time for, time for the demonstration. Alright, so here are our own expenditures. So you'll see that top line. Oh, and to answer your question about the transfer, it's here fiscal year twenty-five. We're looking at about two hundred and thirty thousand more dollars. Estimated contribution to the general fund. And this is what it's on. So our biggest cost overall by a wide margin is our bill to UMPA. Which accounts for sixty-seven percent of our operating expenditures. They've raised that by four percent this year.
What?
There's very little room in the rest of our budget to offset that by cutting costs in other areas. So, we've got sixty-seven percent power cost, thirteen percent personnel, eleven percent transfers. Five percent in our operations and then four percent in charge backs to the city. Yes, Becky is currently doing transfers.
Gotta get eleven million, eleven standing.
Now she's doing our operations, which is five percent of our budget.
Well, I was gonna say, if you need help, if you get over budget, there's there are people here who can help.
So like we said, this is about the portion of the budget that we have full control over. And it, cutting costs there. Doesn't do much to offset increased costs to our power bill to UMPA. And our last is our charge backs to the city, which is very close to our same, to the same cost as our operations cost at four percent. And there's that little bit up there. So.
She has like two minutes, the trick or treaters, right?
This kind of demonstration.
So any questions? About our budget, about our operations? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Charlie.
So, okay, so, sorry, combining our operations, our our um revenue over surfinitures, we're looking at a one point five million dollar surplus. About on par with last year. Trying to maintain, maintain stability in our contribution to our fund balance. Uh, a couple of other things I wanted to point out about um the rate increase. Uh, we're looking at uh an overall three percent increase. So not even matching the four percent from UMPA, trying to keep it as reasonable as possible for our customers. Uh, we would have a three hundred and seventy million, three million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollar deficit if we did not raise rates, raise rates. On our operations. Um. And so we're hoping that this rate increase keeps us healthy without hurting our customers. We're looking at changing, I wanna especially point out our residential rate change because we're hoping it does a couple of things. We are looking to raise the base charge to flat eighteen dollars, but reduce the first block down to seven cents. That keeps it revenue neutral for the majority of our customers. Uh, getting into block two, we wanna raise it from ten point one nine cents to eleven cents. And block three, from twelve point one nine cents to thirteen cents. We're hoping that this encourages conservation for our larger use customers. It also makes it so that anyone who signs up for shared solar would now save money in the second tier, not just the third tier. So that would expand our base of shared solar customers who would benefit financially from the program, not just environmentally. So that was the goal in this structure. For everything else, there are small increases across all uh parts of the bill. So that's how we're structuring it.
That's fantastic.
Thank you. And then here, this is a bit busy, but what I'm trying to point out is that. Uh, this top yellow line, here's Provo, the new Provo rate versus the current Provo rate. The top line is our high-end users who use double the average of everyone else. Even with this rate change. They're only seeing their bill increase from about a hundred and twenty-one dollars to a hundred and twenty-six dollars. So we're hoping that not, that's not hurting some from those high-use customers. And then that middle line is our average. Again, it stays flat. And the bottom line is our very small end users who typically don't get out of the first tier, again, stays fairly flat to them as well. So we've tried, whoa, did I do that?
Several of these charts, it's real and see the stat ranking. Um, what is NFI willing to keep their costs so low? Is there consistently?
Some of the lowest rates. That's a great question. I would want to talk to NFI about that at uh possibly our UMPA conferences. They also have a much smaller customer base than we do. We have to serve a wider variety of types of customers than they do. Which might play into it, but I'd be interested to hear from them what they're doing to keep costs low. And I would be interested to hear whether they're artificially keeping costs low and not keeping up with their capital projects. Which is a problem a lot of municipalities tend to have. They don't do regular uh cost of service studies to find out whether they're actually covering future costs to their system.
Yeah, they don't do any investment in sustainability programs um to the, not even near the extent. Comment on your system upgrades, but there there's a lot of work that they're they're gonna do. My guess is you're gonna see those rates raise quite a bit.
Uh, any other questions on the rate structure? Okay? Any other general questions?
Yes, um, Charlie and Scott, thank you for this.
Yes, um Charlie and Scott, thank you for this, but very helpful. One thing that I think would be helpful to us, you talk about a general fund balance that is approaching forty one million dollars and projected surpluses in some of these areas. And yet, looking at a potential rate increase, the same year we're looking at rate increases for water and transportation. You also talked about several capital projects that you're looking to fund. If we could see at some point your uh projected uses of those of that forty one million dollar balance. So that we can help justify the need for a rate increase.
Yeah, um, I can actually answer at least in fiscal year twenty six. It's, it's a lot of slides back. Uh, but we are looking at sixteen, oh, I passed it. I was too aggressive. Too excited. Alright, there we go. So it's small, I'm sorry, but we're looking at probably spending about sixteen million dollars of our fund balance just next year. For these huge substation projects. So we are dipping into our fund balance quite a bit.
And what's a healthy fund balance?
Uh, a healthy fund balance is about a hundred and eighty days cash on hand. We have a, we have a goal of a minimum of twenty five million.
Okay.
Um, so this would.
Put you right about there.
That would put us right about there. And we have a couple of other years of heavy spending ahead of us as well. So we're trying to make sure that we cover both our operating and capital projects.
That's thoughtful, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Bogdan.
Here also, they have to have, it's industry standard to have so many days of cash on hand. Because I'm gonna refer to you, let you explain it to him of why you have to have such a big so many days of cash on hand. Their industry recommendation isn't in a year?
It, it, the recommended is a year, but that's very unattainable for most municipalities. Uh, unfortunately, we don't see that much volatility in the weather, in our location. Uh, we don't have the huge forest fires that they PG and E struggle with in California, the West Coast. Um, but one hundred and eighty days is about where we would want to stay. And we will drop a bit below that with some of the C I P spending, which again is why it's imperative we keep minor rate increases to keep our fund balance healthy.
Thank you. It's just so they can. But in an emergency, you having of cash on hand, so.
Yes.
So we're not without power for days on end.
Alright.
So they can.
Other questions, comments for Scott or Charlie?
Nice work.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Alright, we'll continue then with presentation from Development Services on their proposed fiscal year twenty twenty six budget presented by Bill Pepperon.
Bill, you see what the standard is here.
Um, I cannot keep up with uh any of the departments you've been hearing from. Uh, my department is very small and my budget is a fraction.
You don't have a candy budget for.
Uh, Scott could spend my entire budget. Compared to what he's got. Um. So appropriations uh requested outside of our point twenty six, twenty five. Um, these two in zoning enforcement and in my hometown. As I go through my presentation, you'll see that we have found ways to pay for any increases that we have asked for or we're going to ask for. With the exception of my hometown, that's one that we've struggled with. The um kind of irony of that is that if you look at all of the programs in our department. Uh, the one where we get the biggest bang for a buck is my hometown. You look at the money we spend versus the benefit we get out of that. Um, Aaron and Kendra are just doing a great job with that. Anyway, unfunded or underfunded deeds. And proposals to fund them. So zoning enforcement, twenty nine thousand dollars funded through civil fines that we have started to assess. Scott has done projections that we believe the income from that would be thirty thousand on the low end and fifty thousand on the up on the higher end. Parking enforcement to shift one part-time office assistant to full-time with taking on the sports park and being involved at the airport and um increased uh surveillance in some of the problem areas that you're very familiar with. Um, that office assistant going full-time would be helpful. We created a position of assistant chief building official, but we didn't um add to the total staff. We moved a staff member into that position and we did not backfill the position that employee vacated. My hometown is the nineteen thousand that I refer to. Um. We've talked about all of these many times. You're very familiar with these. Uh, Sandy Busio is proposing that we increase the parking permit areas from fifteen dollars per year to one hundred. Um, one of the areas is one hundred dollars already, the ones that are fifteen are many years old. And we're simply subsidizing them too heavily. So she's gonna make that recommendation.
On the sports park, when we're monitoring them, is that a chargeback that we get from Parks Department?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, R D L, we've talked about that many times. Also, we know that those are artificially low. These studies going on right now, we thought we had numbers to share with you today. But as the staff was going through the fee study just last week, we noticed some assumptions in it that we thought weren't quite right. And we asked the consultant to go back and reexamine their numbers based on new data that we gave them. So we think we'll be bringing these new numbers to you the next couple of weeks. But I'm sorry, I couldn't have those ready for you today. Um, request that'll increase ongoing operations or maintenance. So restructuring personnel has that cost to it. Zoning enforcement, that's the twenty nine thousand. Scott has previously had fifteen thousand in his budget for property cleanup. So when we have a really bad property where the owner can't afford to do what we need to do. We go in and do it, we spend the money for it and we lean the property. Um. Fourteen thousand for the data uh software that we've been talking to you about, those would be ongoing costs. My hometown is the nineteen thousand that we, we talked about. Some efficiencies that we've experienced that we haven't talked about before is that the planning division has three cars up for replacement this year. And looking at how those are used and when those are used, we thought that we could cut back one of those three. We could replace three cars with two cars. So that's a forty thousand dollar initial savings plus the maintenance cost of that vehicle and going maintenance. Sandy Busio's group is sixty thousand above where they were year to date in collecting parking fines. Um, so we're doing much better in those collections. And then in the building division, by reclassifying a employee we're trying to hire right now, replacing a permit tech with a secretary that provides the savings there. Um, so we've tried to be extremely careful with what little money we have in our budget. Um, and I'm really grateful for division heads who are always conscious of that.
Um, are we getting more revenue in parking because we're using the city's ability to go to collections now?
Sandy, let's go ahead.
Actually, the increase is just for actually finding more information. And so the delay for parking tickets for collecting more and more bills. And so that's what you're seeing we increase. Our parking is numbers are pub. But I think that's more just because of all of the areas that we've increased. And um plus right now should not, um, I shouldn't say it out loud, but right now we're fully staffed and we are running six days a week or about twenty four hours. That's very difficult, like you guys know, but right for this moment, we're doing, we're really good, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I was just curious, and the fleet, I assume those are leased uh vehicles or are those purchased?
Purchased.
Is, is there anything, like I remember we went through the whole discussion around the fire truck and actually leasing and there were a number of advantages. I was just curious if, if there's any advantages that we could be seeing here as well.
I'm sorry, I wouldn't know fleet is completely run by a division underneath Public Works. And I, I just have no knowledge of those numbers of what that would be. I would, I'm pretty sure that Gordon and his people would keep an eye on that or would look at those different scenarios periodically.
Yeah.
But I, I'm sorry, I can't speak to that. Of these all these expenses here, that comes to less than that savings there. So again, this isn't an ongoing thing that we can depend on every year. That's just where we are year to date this year. But we have been trending better in that direction and we think that we'll continue to do better with parking collections. As far as accomplishments in the or uh performance measures. Now the achieved, that's year to date. So I've still got the rest of April, May and June where those numbers will increase. And where the achieved numbers would increase. Accomplishments for the different divisions.
What a question. What's the physical therapy funding?
I'm wondering, it's so random.
Melissa.
So that's through one of our public services, friends, um, through C P G and it's um Rocky Mountain University. It's uh they run a, a clinic over by a mountain lands, um, health clinic also. So they do um some therapy for long-term individuals.
One of our best department goals is the hiring of our, our D A director and our economic development director. So we appreciate your helping uh allowing us to accomplish that. So thank you. So that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions or have any division heads answer questions if you have any others.
Um, Bill, you mentioned the redevelopment of the former Los Armonas building. So that's the site east of their current location.
No, that's the, that's the building itself, um.
Where they are now.
Yeah, um. It had after the fire, we, we were having ongoing problems with people breaking into it, squatting in it, you know, occupying it. You know, fires were being set in it. Um, we finally got them to take down the building but keep the facade. But if you go behind it, it's all.
Wow.
The demaster removed, so ready for redevelopment.
This is the fall of Los Armonos previously.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And, and is, and what's the timeline for the development of that?
So the current owner has talked to us about some ideas to develop it. Um, I don't think we have an actual application. Do we have an application on that yet? Aaron, I think we do. They've talked to us about replacing the commercial space plus adding some residential.
Yeah, the, the concept that we've seen is a mixed use building. Um, so details of that we don't know yet until we did form an occasion.
So what we tell downtown reuse of buildings like that is to replace the historic commercial, they don't have to provide any parking because or a stark situation there. But if they add new occupancy, they have to provide parking for that. In this particular case, they've talked to us about using some of our D A's spaces in the Wells Fargo structure for any residential that they might add.
Any questions for Bill? Alright, great. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate your work and all of your staff. Thank you. We'll now take a brief break and reconvene at three ten for our presentation.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Okay, we'll reconvene our work session with our next agenda item, which is a discussion regarding data centers and self-serve power plants presented by Scott Bunker.
Okay, well, before I start, I just want to recognize Gary Winter from our energy board. He's our chair. He is here today and he wanted, he reminded me. You know, one of the most important things about our fund balance and a healthy fund balance and our double A bond rating is is, you know, that 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 provides a huge benefit to us in being able to fund any of these projects that we have coming up. And so you know, as we go forward and we look at a rate increase and potentially trying to keep that fun fun balance healthy, that's really one of the main reasons why. Anything else you want to add to that, Gary?
Oh, okay.
All right. Well, so today I just wanted to give a quick demonstration. Bill and I and Gordon have met had a bunch and talked a bunch and we've met with a bunch of people and and I just put together and you received it in your packet, kind of a nine-point um talking points. That's all this is. This this isn't really much of a presentation as much as it is talking points. Because we just wanted to have a good discussion on data centers. And so I just wanted to first and foremost just say, because some people have said that, you know, Provo Power is not does not want any data centers. We're not friendly to data centers. And I just wanted to let you know that's not the truth. It's not the case at all. Um there there is a place for them and there's, it could be a huge benefit to our system. They could be a benefit to the city as well. If like this talking point says, if it's the right place. You got to make sure that these are data centers are the right one with the right motivations. You know, there are there are those out there that that truly want to have a data center and that's their goal and that's what they're working towards. And we we're fully supportive of those. And and then Bill, please feel free to step in anytime. So um but we want to make sure that that it's the right place in the city. And we've had a lot of discussions about that. You've heard some of the discussions as well. Make sure that they fit into the proper zone. That's critical. We want them in the right neighborhood. We want them where they meet where they should be. And uh and especially if it's a data center right next to a supporting power plant. Um and I'll just give you an example of that, you know, on on we hit our peak last year. Um the we the highest peak we've ever had at a hundred and ninety megawatts. So when you talk about bringing in a data center that's fifty megawatts, B Y U is twenty megawatts. You talk about bringing a data center that's in a hundred megawatts or two hundred megawatts. Now you're talking about doubling the load of Provo. And so this is a big deal. Um and so if we're if we're going to accommodate a big deal like this, it's I think it's critical. I know you think it's critical, as I've talked to many of you. That we do this the right way. And so that's that's just really the first point. For me, the next one obviously is we do not want to put Provo at risk. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways that a data center could come in and and put the city of Provo at risk if it's if it's not done the right way. And so we want to make sure that 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 it's done the right way so that it doesn't put the citizens of Provo at risk. We've got forty thousand customers. We just topped our forty thousand mark I mentioned to you in his previous presentation. And uh those forty thousand customers are important to us. We don't want one customer coming in and putting all those other forty thousand customers at risk, you know, whether it's with a a a a power plant that is no longer needed because they cut tail and ran or whatever it is. You know, we want to make sure that there's bonds and assurances and everything put up. That they're going to do what they're going to do. And so um and and please feel free to ask questions or chime in as we go. And then, of course, in the right place means that there's appropriate infrastructure to support it. There are places in the city right now where where we're talking with a data center where there's a massive natural gas line right close by. And we have a transmission line and the distribution feeds to feed it. They have extra property for a debt for a power plant. The streets, the sidewalks, all the other um uh infrastructure it's in, it's in place and say, or if it's not, we want to make sure that they're willing to to help fund that. Um and in a lot of cases, these data centers are. I have a friend, my next door neighbor is a director in Eagle Mountain. They've got Facebook out there. That was part of the deal with Facebook when they came in, roads, sidewalks, utilities, you know, they're paying for it. You know, and they were more than happy to. They just wanted to get their data center in. Um and that's that's one of the things that we want to make sure and do um is that they have the 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 right infrastructure as well. Now, for us as a power company, this is a little bit selfish. We want to make sure that the right infrastructure is there as well because you know, these data centers come in and they say, we want to put in a two hundred megawatt power plant. Like I mentioned, that's doubling our load. That's a that's a good sized power plant, especially in U M P A's resources. Give you an example, our West Valley Power Plant is two hundred megawatts. And so, you know, that's a that it's a big power plant and we want to make sure that it goes not only in the right place, but you know, we that it that it's needed and it's built properly. It's built to our specs. It's built exactly what Provo needs. And also same with the transmission and distribution systems. They're going to come in with the with all of this and they need that type of infrastructure. Not only should they pay for it, but it needs to be built to our specs. They need to make sure that they they provide and build it to our specs and that where at all possible that those costs are are borne by the the developer. Um in regards to power and power plants, um especially when we talk about costs being borne by the power, the contractor. You know, this is it's a huge investment. You're talking about a couple hundred million dollars, three or four hundred million dollars probably for a two hundred megawatt plant. And so.
So would it be possible for someone to come in and build their own power plant to service their facility that does not connect into the Provo Power system?
Right now, no, um based on um what we're called in all power requirements with U M P A. So we're part of of U M P A, which is six cities. We've got five other cities that we work with. Every project that they build, we all have to agree to. I'm just going to pause for a second. Um we got a stranger that entered the room, Travis Paul. I wanted to introduce you to Travis. None of you know who he is, but he's a great partner with ours at U M P A. Travis, thanks for coming. We appreciate you being here. Travis is here to answer any of his questions from U M P A's perspective as well. So and he's obviously a great supporter of Provo Tower. So.
So that requirement applies to everyone, not just the municipal agencies, but anybody who wants to create a power plant in the geographic region.
Right.
So B Y U is in on this.
It's in our bond covenants. It's in our S one agreement. It's in in code. And so if they want to do that, then they would have to work with U M P A. And then we'll get into that here a little bit more when we start talking about U M P A specifications that they put together. Um that's one of the things that is required. Now they've we'll 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 talk about that a little bit more. Is that okay?
So if somebody were wanting to do an island, we need to tell them straight up, that's not possible.
Yeah, but that's not possible. I think it's more working with U M P A. I think one of the most important things, Travis, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is if they if they build, want to build a hundred fifty megawatt power plant, you know, but they don't want to relinquish it to to Provo or U M P A. But at least U M P A by the by the specifications and their policies, they have to be able to let them run it. They will run and operate that plant. We would prefer, I would prefer as Provo Power, Travis, I don't know what your thoughts are, that they that we own it.
That who run it? The U M P A run it?
U M P A runs it, yeah.
And Council Ripple, just one clarification from legal perspective. It's not that it's my understanding, at least, it's not that it's illegal for them to do it. It's illegal for us to let them do it. That makes sense because we have a contract with U M P A. It says we must get all of our requirements.
Right. It's like we've got our own little non-compete going on and we can't allow a a little competitor to come in.
And that's one thing that kind of concerns us, you know, and we we talked about this in St. George at our meetings with U M P A. You know, is there's a lot of pressure from the federal government, from the state government to 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 provide power for these data centers. Our biggest concern is is we don't work with them. And you know, whatever the arrangement is, you know, they own the power plant, U M P A, you know, operates it, whatever it is. I- i- is there going to be time where the state and the federal government come in and just say, hey, we're going to let them island? We're going to force you to let them build their own power plant. Now, I would rather be a partner with them and and help them out and make them become a part of us rather than not. And so and that's that's why I kind of alluded the next slide. Uh we've got U M P has two policies for power plants. And I will just say this about U M P A. I don't know, Travis, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but right now there's 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 no other entity right now that's been as progressive and proactive as U M P A in trying to accommodate these data centers. They see the need out there. They're hearing from them all the time. Um Rocky Mountain Mountain Power initially just said right off the bat, no, we can't. Right now, because of our current situation, we can't help at all. And U M P has really gone out of their way to to come up with policies for up to fifty megawatts. This is what our requirements are. You know, we can, we'll work with you and we'll go out and get the power for you and provide it for you. If it's a fifty above fifty megawatts, then that's where they have a, in in there's their contract, their 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 agreement with their policies that you know, that there'll be, there's some discussions that can be had about who owns it, but definitely want U M P to operate. Is that correct, Travis? Anything you want to add to that, Travis?
No, other than
Got to be at the microphone.
Well, you've seen the the state legislature, what happened, right? When when Rocky Mountain Power says no, no to data centers, that the data centers went to the legislators of the state of Utah and said, we got to work with you. So there's some legislation passed that allows us to have them a bit more proactively. But we've been working with them. Today I've had four data centers contacting me. So we they're out there. We just want it to be developed in a responsible way that does not risk any of our customers. That's all the other cities or the Rosy Provo either rate. So we try to eliminate the risk. And I think we can be good partners with data centers that have the capital to help us um for our load and for their own load. So that's kind of the way we achieve that.
And Council Bunker.
And so Travis on Scott, but probably Travis, do we have a cap of say, we're only going to give you this much power because we don't want it to affect our power customers? That would be my my worry is on the hottest day of the year, a data center is pulling more than we can give. And so then it's blackouts and brownouts or whatever, because we don't have that cap.
There is a cap for the physical infrastructure. And so whenever a data center comes in, you have to do a system impact study with the city. The city will have to determine if there's upgrade that will need happen to feed them the capacity that they're asking for. There's also a a capacity component for the transmission system that is operated by Rocky Mountain Power. So any data center comes in, they say they want two hundred megawatts, they're going to have to go through the study, upgrade all the facilities to allow that to happen. Now, from the the generation side, whatever cost that they occur is going to be on them. So if you look at the policies, it's not a rate structure that you're going to provide them. They'll pay for all the generation costs. And then you'll charge them for the cost to distribute that power to the city. But by doing that, we don't risk any of the other customers in the city of of either subsidizing them or we we just have a cost that they are that they are causing, they will have to to bear.
Up to that two hundred thousand.
Yeah, they have to say how much they want. So they'll say, I want two hundred megawatts. We don't really have a cap other than if they bring in a three hundred fifty megawatt load, they'll have to have a power plant that covers the three hundred fifty megawatts or two hundred megawatts. So we do have up to fifty megawatts because we know we can go out on the market and probably supply that. But if we go out on the market and they say it costs eighty dollars, we're going to charge them to eighty dollars for that market price. And then whatever it takes to distribute to the city, then the city will charge that. So it'll be you know, I say forty dollars for distribution. So the hundred twenty dollars is what they pay for the power. So we're separating them outside of your rate so they bear all of the costs associated with the with the data.
But not only that, I mean, if they come in and they say, okay, I want two hundred megawatts of power. And then all this said in there, starting to pull three hundred megawatts of power. What do we do? Do we say, no, whoa, whoa, we only have contracted with you two hundred and so we're cutting you off at two oh one?
Yes, whenever a data center, they have a breaker. I mean, this is just like eighty. We do this for every customer. Every customer that comes in a residential, commercial, they come in and they say, I want a two hundred amp service. And so they install a two hundred amp breaker. So the breakers there to establish the limit that they go to. And that's what we charge our our impact fees on. So if they go over that, then then there's a, it cuts the power on.
Okay, so it's kind of built in is what you're saying, built into the meter?
Yes, and the transformers that they purchase, right? For two hundred megawatt, you're going to buy transformers for that two hundred megawatts.
So there's no way they could take power from my house in the middle of the the summertime to to do their two oh five or two two year.
Yeah.
That's what we want to make sure.
The size that they're asking for. Good question.
If, yeah, if we do it right, then they need to bring in that hundred megawatts, hundred fifty, whatever it is, that's got to be added, added resource, not it's got to be in addition to what we already need.
And so if the the power plant that they bring in to generate their own goes offline, then they're just S O L until they bring it back on. They're not drawing from our power.
That's part of the discussions that they'll have with U M P A and part of the planning, you know, what happens in those circumstances. We do have data centers down here in South Provo. A couple small ones, four megawatts, Blue Host, you know, they've been here for how long? Ten, fifteen years? You know, we've have, we have some, you know, that they've been operating and doing just fine. Providing very minimal problems. Um they they think they can be a great neighbor if you do it right. I didn't want to go back. Charlie, you want to talk a little bit? We we did get, uh this is in response to your question, Catrice, about pollution. We did get a hold of um Cat who provides at our power plant, it's a twelve and a half megawatt power plant. We have five units, they're each two and a half megawatts, running on natural gas. And so that's what we base these numbers off of. But they were able to get us numbers about, you know, kind of narrow this down to how much pollution do they emit and how does that relate to cars on the road? Well, Charlie, you want to just share what they, because we just got this this afternoon. And so she synthesized this really fast.
But it's estimated that a one hundred megawatt uh natural gas power plant with the C R's uh would be equivalent to fifty-four cars on the road annually. A hundred and fifty megawatt plant would be about eighty-two new cars on the road annually. A two hundred megawatt plant would be a hundred and eight cars.
That's for C O two, right?
Yeah, just for C O two.
You mean like every day?
It's like a small apartment, Bill.
Yeah. C O two. The NOx.
Yeah, NOx is different. Yeah, she's going to go over the NOx.
Like NOx uh for that, for our current plant, if it were to run twenty-four seven, which it doesn't, that would be twenty-seven thousand.
Is it the plant running twenty-four seven?
No.
No.
That's our, that's our peaking plant. So it just runs at the very, very intermittent.
Yes. Yeah, exactly. So we want to look at the NOx, the P M ten, P M two point five, those are higher levels than the C O two. Um, uh, with that, with those power plants are emitting into the system, so, uh, those are significant.
I, I, I did some back, back end calculations, I went on. Several different websites, including the EPA, and I had much bigger numbers for CO two, so I'd like to.
Yeah.
What you, what you.
And we talked this morning, they talked, they, they also got their information from the EPA, so I'm not sure, but we'll have to compare notes.
Yeah, because this is, we got this literally like five minutes before we left our presentation, so we'll have to dig into this more.
Okay, yeah. These are SCRs, that's the best available control.
SCR, that's, that's the pollution controls on those units, that, that makes them, it's one of the most, um, cleanest units in the nation, sorry Travis, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Say that again?
The SCRs are the pollution controls on our units, each one of those units.
You're talking about UMPA?
Yeah, and our current power plant right at Provo Power, that's what, when we talk about SCRs. We want them to come in with those same type of pollution controls, obviously, if they didn't, then those numbers actually go up. Brimley eye.
Okay, so you're saying the plant they would have to build would be this high standard?
So Travis, Charlie, stand back up with that, because they got the numbers on there from when we, our old power plant, and just tell them about the NOx, how many cars was our old power plant?
Um, so for the old power plant, the NOx was five hundred and eight thousand cars.
And then we toured that old power plant down, built this new one with these SCRs on it, and that brought it down to, was it twenty-seven thousand or?
Uh, yeah, it brought it down to. One point, uh, one thousand two hundred sixty-six hours.
It brought it down quite a bit, so these, this, this is the best technology that, that's out there right now, as far as these, these are concerned, but. Again, when they come in, they're gonna have to get the air quality permits, and make sure that they can even qualify for all of that as well.
Okay, so the plant they're looking at, about a hundred, it's about twenty-seven thousand cars. Is what I got out of that, right?
No, for NOx.
For NOx, yes.
Right, but that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
And they, Charlie did run a breakdown, whether it's fifty megawatts, hundred megawatts, hundred fifty, um, you know, obviously just increases up from.
And you're gonna talk about the, you just mentioned it, the, um. The permits you need, that, that, how many we had left?
Yeah.
So, is, I, I, I mean, we were talking about nuclear earlier, and maybe Travis has some thoughts about this, but it seems to me that the entire. Industry of data centers right now is basically so energy intensive that it can't. Use anything that's clean and renewable because of the baseload problem, but if nuclear were on board, it seems like it's a different conversation. So this feels to me like, the, I mean, and I understand why, the, 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 you know, demand for data centers is huge right now. But it seems premature for municipalities to say, yeah, we want this in our city. Um, even though maybe ten years from now, we can do it in a perfectly clean way, but for now, we're gonna have to do natural gas or some other. Uh, less desirable energy source, and therefore lock us in for decades of pollution that we wouldn't have. If we waited five or ten more years, I mean, I don't know if five or ten more years is. So it just feels to me like we're putting a cart before the horse there.
In some ways, yeah, absolutely, you know, with, with some of them we've talked about. You know, they're, they're talking about phasing it in, because we can only provide them so much right upfront anyways, so, and it takes a few years to build a power plant and a substation. And so, you know, there, we, you know, we have some that are saying, okay, what if we come in and we just get eight megawatts or sixteen megawatts now, and then. You know, as we, as we get the infrastructure built for that, then we can, we can move forward and add more load, um. You know, there, there's also that, that possibility too, I don't, Travis wanted to add anything else, but.
Yeah, the dream. I would love to see more nuclear, right, that's the dream, that would be the cleanest source of energy, I, you're just out. Years and years for that, I mean.
How, how many years do you think?
Ten plus, unless, unless regulations have changed for nuclear, unless some of the, the, um. Regulations that are required are changed. I've been a proponent of getting two or three small modular nuclear designs and pick the best one and, and build them, right? That would be the best scenario, and we'll see, politically, it just hasn't been a priority since. Or since the Carter administration, so, I mean, it's just, it hasn't been United States Carter, and that's why we had a great talk then.
It was awesome.
The, at the UMP. It was really good, not only the energy.
And I missed it.
I know, you wish, you know, I wish you were here.
We're not rubbing it in though, George.
It wasn't only this for. Yeah, United States, but yes, I agree that. Eventually, I'm hoping that nuclear becomes a much bigger part, portfolio.
That's why we're trying to, not necessarily put the brakes on them, slow them down a bit, you know, so we can do this right. But our, again, our, one of our concerns is, you know, that, we, we put the brakes on too much, and then they're just gonna come in and start mandating that. They can just build a plant wherever they want, and long as they island it, and take care of it, we have nothing to do about it, we're a little bit worried about that too.
From the state.
The state and the federal government, yeah. Because these, these data centers are lobbying hard. They are lobbying, they are lobbying hard. So we've had some interesting discussions just about that as well, I met with my state senator, my state congressman, and. Oh, oh my gosh, you know, like the questions they threw at me, and one of the, one of the questions that my, uh, state representative, I should say, said is, well, why aren't you up on Capitol Hill lobbying? Well, Provo doesn't have a big lobbying budget, you know, that's why I'm meeting with you, and I'm meeting with my state senator, and we, you know, we've got Isaac up there doing his best, but. You know, I don't know that you want me using your tax dollars to go out and spend a lot of money lobbying, and. So, you know, we're trying to do it the way that we can, but we're just, we wanna make sure that we do this right, for sure. Is there a way to, to phase it in too, if we, if we have to?
Do you think it would be useful for us to develop like a coherent policy regarding data centers and? And everything?
Yeah.
Um, would that be the sort of thing that, like, if we did a motion, we would have staff do that, working with administration, development services, power. Legal, I think, to craft such a policy for the council to adopt?
Yeah, Travis, it's one of the first things he did when he went to UMPA, he felt the pressure. He knew that there was a lot going on, he heard the complaints up there about Rocky Mountain Power and other entities, UAMs, just say a note, we want nothing to do with it. Said if we don't do something, at least, and control this, we could get controlled. And so he did, he came up with these two policies that I think we'll send to you, we'll give to you if you haven't had them, and then. You know, we could certainly fashion something there from your perspective as well. Um, Bill, I don't know if you'd like to add anything to that from.
I agree.
Your perspective, but.
I, if I could just add to that, I think, I think the emissions question and pollution question is absolutely central to the whole thing, and I, you know. This is way, there's just way too much opportunity for. Being intentionally vague about that, and then not having any solid guarantees, and then, then, then ending up with a really serious problem that, that affects our city or health. Or well-being as a community, I mean, because it potentially, if, if, if it's not controlled by. The best technology or the best energy resources, you, you end up with. Um, essentially, duh, you know, fifty percent increase of your city population in terms of emissions.
Yeah.
That's massive.
It's huge.
And that's irresponsible of us, so it seems to me like we have to like have a policy that's very. Clearly, um, stipulating what, what expectations we have about the measurable. Reliable data that we were given ahead of time. That guarantees emissions, and then if the emissions, uh, are measured post. Uh, approval, and they turn out to violate what they said, then we have some legal rights to, to limit their activity, I mean, I, I don't know what it looks like, but it just seems to me, we can't. We can't just sort of go by word of mouth here and say, oh, don't worry, you know, we, we'll use the best technology.
Well, Bill can tell you, we, we've, we've got a lot of promises. You probably heard it too, you know, and we just walk out and go, wow, that would be nice, but that's, that's never gonna happen. You know, but, but there are some of that out there that I will say that are, that are legitimate. You know, they, I think they're coming about it the right way, they, they are talking about those issues, they are talking about funding infrastructure, they are talking about. You know, letting UMPA operate the power plant, whatever it is, those are the ones that we want to engage. You know, and, and I will be honest, and Bill could correct me, but it's pretty easy to delineate who's who, just based on what they bring to the table right off the bat.
And so you mentioned that we already have some relatively small data centers that have been well established for a long time. But based on what I've been reading, the ones that are wanting to come now are like orders of magnitude different from what we already have.
Yeah.
And so I'm wondering if it would make sense to. Like, put a hold on any data centers, because the new ones aren't the same as, as the old ones. Uh, maybe remove that as a, I think it's a conditional use for different zones right now, instead of a permitted use?
And most of the sounds permitted.
It's permitted, maybe, maybe take that off as a permitted use until we can develop a policy. Because, yeah, the ones that we, we've got before, which we've been working with are fine, are not our new applicants. The question is, um. If we did something like that, how long would it take us to develop a coherent policy? And if taking that time would, then. I don't know, make somebody at the state mad enough that we lose any kind of leverage whatsoever?
That's the million dollar question, Bill, you got an answer to that?
Ninety days.
Yeah, ninety days?
Days. Um, because we have several zones that these are allowed right now.
Yes.
Um, and, and I guess I should make a distinction that there's a difference between the data center itself. And the power generation necessary for the data center.
We've actually already started on this, or Council Ripple.
Okay.
Bill and Scott and I had the same conversation, I think, two weeks ago, I think Bill is already in the process of, or has already noticed. In order to invoke the pending legislation rule. A move to not remove the data centers, but to add a restriction that it is data centers that are not self-circled.
Okay.
That are, that, uh, that the conditional use applies to.
Okay, that's, that's good, as I, I want us to be able to look at these things coming in and make. Smart decisions, instead of saying, oh, well, this zone says you can do it, so, take it.
Travis, did you raise your hand? Do you have a comment? Okay, sorry, I thought you.
All right, um. Go ahead, I, I, but I think I, I will be doing a motion for us to. Create a policy later, but.
Yeah, again, these are just discussion points, yeah, absolutely, just good discussion points for that, you know, again. Like we mentioned, we don't wanna put our other forty thousand customers at risk for some stranded investment, and it may or may not last, we don't know. You know, Travis can tell you, when these others came down in South Provo, four megawatts, you know, we were told immediately, they wanted to double date at some point, right? And it just never came to fruition, and.
Can you define stranded investments?
Yeah, I did, they come in and say, they come in and build a power plant, and then they decide that this, this is not, um, that their data center is not gonna. Be viable anymore, they just pick up and leave, right, and we don't wanna be stuck. With anything in our city that's gonna strand us with that investment, that power plant in our U city, did we have, you know, especially if it's forced on us to, that. That, you know, say the, the government comes and says, hey, you, they, you have to just allow them in, or whatever they are, and they can build their power plant. You don't run it, you don't operate it, you don't own it, and then what happens when they up and leave? You know, or what if they bring in a, an entity like that, and, and then we know that they also have a little bit different. Requirements as far as pollution controls too, then we might be held to, and Travis can talk to a little bit more of that than I can, but.
So I, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, the, the problem with that would be, not only would be stuck with the asset, but also any liability associated with the asset too, like it's still had debt or something on it? Okay.
I don't think it'd be stuck with the debt, but.
We have, we'll have good lawyers making sure we're.
Right.
Okay.
That's all I'm gonna say, this is about lawyer.
I, I just.
This is why Brian's involved.
Scott, I, I don't.
He might give a better definition of a stranded investment than I do.
Scott, I don't understand the difference between, I, I get that they're different functions thing, but someone who comes in and builds a factory. That makes something, and they go out of business and strand the investment. Okay, you look for a buyer, you look for a waste opera, how is, how is this uniquely different? I understand how it impacts the, the rest of the system, I get all that.
Yeah, well, if it's tied to our grid, you know, and we've, we've, we brought them in as well, to be part of UMPA or whatever, and then they, they up and leave. You know, and, and UMPA's stuck with a power plant that now is two hundred megawatts, and.
Yeah.
We don't have the operation there to, to take that, Travis, will you say something?
I think that the big change is that the magnitude is so much larger, right, so, uh, uh. Industrial customer that might come in, they, we, we always plan for growth in the city, so every year, we're looking at what their growth is. So we can make sure that we have the generation to, to do that, so, but we're looking at one, two percent growth. So you're looking at one, two, three, four megawatts a year, they're coming in, they want fifty megawatts, so. Whether they get a power plant, or we go out on the market, and we, we purchase fifty megawatts of power, which is millions of dollars. And then if they just leave, and we're still, we're still holding that, that, um, contract to, to buy fifty million dollars from another source. Then that's a stranded investment, either from the power plant, or even on a resource where we're buying it on the market. So there's contracts, we go out and get those contracts, and if they leave them with us, we don't wanna be left with holding the contract, the cost, no means at all. It's magnitude, it's just the magnitude.
That's why we need good attorneys, right? Because there's good attorneys out there, huh, Brian?
No.
We'll find some.
We know UMPA has some good ones, Travis has used them before. He's got some, he's got some good ones there as well, so. Um, we already went through this, the, the S one agreements and requirements as an all-in requirement, um. And then air quality permits as well, this is a concern that we have, you know, we're in that. Z- zone where, you know, there, these are few and far between, and so one of our biggest concerns is if they came and build a power plant in Provo. You know, is that gonna utilize? Any permits there that we would need for future growth, or just, just for our own system, our own citizens, you know? Fortunately with UMPA, you know, a lot of our power plants, as you know, they aren't in Provo, we have the one twelve and a half megawatts here, the rest of our resources all come from outside of Provo. Um, but, but still, there is a concern with the, with the air quality permits, and, and this zone is especially, because. It's different than Juap County, right, they have different requirements, but Juap County and Salt Lake County, Utah County have, we wanna make sure when they come in. You know, that, that they do all the necessary studies with the Department of Air Quality, and they. They, they can first of all get those, that's one of the first things they gotta find on, see if they can even qualify for that, and I don't know, we're not even sure that you can, right Travis?
Well, I'll be honest, I told them that they would be able to qualify, because we don't run, uh. Twenty-four hours a day, I said they couldn't, but they went and got a consultant, and the consultant said that there are, there are permits you can buy, you can buy credits. Air credits, and they would allow them to, to, to build here, and there's enough out there that for a hundred megawatt. Plant that had thirty generators, we, we have five, they wanted thirty generators for a hundred megawatts. They, they did show that there, they could operate, um, and that was, that was concerning to me, I was, I was very surprised for example. And so I kinda went back to George, George's, but it's a. Tough decision to let somebody come in and use all those air permits for one customer, when in the future, we may need some of those for the growth of our own city residents.
Well, and I'd be really skeptical about permits too, or the credits for that too, because even though that's an offset somewhere else. We're living in this little bowl of the valley, uh, whatever they're putting it out, the, it's not like the credit erases that stuff from our air. Like, we're still breathing that.
I mean, we talked about that, you know, we, we, we know, we, we know what happened when they wanted to increase the capacity of the airport, right, there was a lot of discussion around. You know, just the air traffic, and what would it add to the area of the valley, so Charlie, you wanted to add something?
I gave one back in the neck and neck, so to answer some questions, the. NOx, uh, would be a total of a hundred and one cars per megawatt. So, there's that.
Per megawatt?
Per megawatt, uh, the PM ten would be. Uh, we're looking for, sorry, making sure we can hear it right. Would be one thousand seven hundred sixty-eight cars per megawatt. PM two point five would be one thousand nine hundred twenty-eight cars per megawatt. And then the CO two is the best one, which is only about half a car. Yeah.
Right.
For all of the.
Yeah. It's not insignificant, right?
All those other values are, are air pollution, like CO two isn't the air pollution, those other values are. Those other NOx, those are the values, the PM two point five, those are when you see a bad ten point five, that's the smog in the area, those are the values.
People going to the hospital.
Those are the bad, yeah.
So that's one of the other things, you know, when we could move forward, you know, as one of these talking points, just making sure we're all on the same page with their quality permits and. And what you do want to or don't want to allow. So, with that, that's just that those nine talking points that, that we came up with. Um, so any questions you have or comments, and then whatever other discussion, but. Bill, anything else you wanted to add? I, I apologize, Bill. Okay. Pause for things out.
All right, well, in that case, I would like to make a motion that our staff work with. Administration, power, um, UMPA, the, all of the relevant actors. To develop a coherent data center policy for council consideration. Um, and I'd want that to come back to the council for input before. Like, if, if this is something that we're going to be adopting as ordinance or whatever, I, I want to come back to us before it would go through like the planning commission process. Because I want us to be able to work on that. Um, so that's, yeah, motion staff work with. Relevant groups to create a policy, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Ripple, with a second by Counselor McKay, any discussion? Makes sense, great, I'll call for a vote then, Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yeah.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes, Counselor Whipple? That's a vote of six zero with Counselor Holman excused.
And Brian, just to clarify, we've already got the pending legislation that would. Tell tell us what the status is. Okay, what what do we need to do on this?
We're intending to initiate that pending legislation on the next planning mission agenda. That will just that will start that pending legislation, we've heard your comment about. Let's bring it to you first before it gets to your planning commission and back to you, so we'll follow that.
And once we, as soon as we notice it, then that triggers a six month.
Right, so that would mean that during the next six months. Nobody would be able to pop in and put a data center in one of the areas that is already zoned for it.
A data center with self serve.
With the self serve power, yeah. So if we were to have a request for another tiny little one like we've had in the past, that would probably be okay. Because it doesn't hit these thresholds.
In fact, I think, didn't we, when you and I talked, I think what we were proposing is. Putting a megawatt limit in the in the conditions, is that what we were gonna do?
Yeah, I think so.
I think we were gonna say, I think we were gonna say, I think what what we were gonna do is change it from data centers as a condition use to data centers less than five megawatts to an. As a condition.
All right, that makes sense. Um, and since that process is always already going, we don't need to do council action. But it's good for all of us to know that we've got a nice little hold on this while we work on the policy. Thank you.
Thanks, great, thank you, Rachel. Any other questions for Scott or Travis? Charlie here? All right. Great, thank you. We're ten minutes ahead of schedule, but Aaron's here. So we'll go ahead with our next item and ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property. Generally located at thirty-four ten West Center Street from the A one ten to the A one zone, Port Utah neighborhood, Aaron Arvorn.
Yes, thank you.
They all say the same thing.
So I have a different kind of presentation for this meeting than I will for tonight. Tonight I'll talk more about the rezone itself, um. But understanding that there's been a lot of conversation around this, I wanted to address some of those points uh in this. Uh, more casual uh meeting, so. Um, kind of just want to run through the concerns that we've heard, uh, that have been points of discussion uh over the last few weeks. So the rezone itself highlighted at the top. Uh, the first concern we're hearing a lot is we're losing open space enjoyed by the public. Moving forward. So this is private farming, um, there has never been. Public access allowed through the private farmland. Uh, I think what people might be thinking of is the Provo Parkway Trail on the north side of this channel. Uh, and not the south side, uh, which is has been the holidays farmland for generations. Um, so just wanted to kind of point that out to start. Uh, the next one is we need to protect and enjoy the river in this area. Great, great thought, great idea. Um, I think that that is. Shown in the development plans, in the concept plan for this development, as we'll get to later in this, and again, tonight. Um, but this. Low flow channel isn't the Provo River anymore, that's been diverted up north. Um, so I think the same kind of ideas and. Uh, policies that we have for the river. Might need some adjustment as we go through this section, right? This is a a pretty low flow. Kind of stagnant water channel and not the Provo River that it was when we adopted plans for it.
I just have a little comment. So I did ask Gordon about. Gosh, if we're gonna start developing this, or should we just make him do the dykes and and redo the dykes right here? He said they don't even require dykes because it's not the river. And it does not have a high flow. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Add one, I I'm, I'd be a little careful about pushing that argument too far though, because. I think the sensitivity here, first of all, the rivers, the the lower channel is still in the process of recuperating. So it's not where it's going to be eventually, the the health of that lower channel. Is going to continue to improve, um. And I think the public perception is they don't. Not everyone understands how many different agencies and entities have been involved in all this decision making. And so there there's the perception that we abandoned this lower channel, of course, we didn't. Um, directly make any of those decisions and and environmentally, the argument can be made that. Uh, very clearly that the upper new delta is is much preferred to what this. Stretch is, but I'm just a little worried about like. Piling on the argument that, well, this, this isn't what it was, and so we can. We can neglect it even more. I know that's not what you're saying, but I I just, I'm a little nervous about. Um, making sure that. This recreational area is still enjoyable, it's still something that people. Um, can continue to to use because people, it's heavily used as as it is. Um, and presumably would continue to be used as long as we don't. You know, degrade it any further.
No, I I definitely see what you're saying. Um, I think the flow is low and I don't see it.
It's not gonna recup.
All the conversations we've we've had with with public works is it's not gonna get higher. Um, I think that when you talk about the recreation. We also need to be careful with that, uh, there hasn't been recreation on this property. Right, so so we're not.
I'm referring to the trail on the other side.
Right, of course, and and that is is unimpacted by this proposal. And I think that's an awesome important point. But I I get what you're saying, we we don't want to carry the. The the line that says we don't care about the river in this section anymore. We still do, and I think that's represented by the plans and and. And we'll see that in a second.
Yeah, to say that it's not the current river channel is to imply that nobody's enjoying it.
Right, I and I didn't, I didn't mean that by.
Yeah, well, I again, I would add my uh, uh, second to that, uh. Yes, this is farm, this is private land, it could be developed. The the corridor along the river, though. Um, I want us to be very careful about what happens along that. Anything along that river. I don't care if this is high flow or low flow. I want us to be careful, so I'm not confused that this is all recreational land. I'm I'm concerned about that buffer zone. You know, uh, even though it's on the south side of the river, I know there's not a trail there. But this is, these are areas that people enjoy, and so I I too would just say, let's be very careful about how we communicate that.
No, I I've, obviously, I, yeah, I agree with all that, it's all good comments, yeah, Counselor Bogdan.
I think at this point. George, were you involved in that rivers and lakes plan? So I'm hearing that there's not a buffer. Why is that?
But I can address that coming up here, I can address that.
You can adjust that way, it's not why there's not a buffer?
Well, there is a buffer, and let me, let me get to that, let me show you.
Go ahead, Eric, thank you.
Um, okay. Okay, important trees need to be preserved, uh, so we've, we've talked a lot about that, uh, Bill and I walked out with with Chaz, our urban forester and Doug Robbins. Uh, and we walked the walked the property uh on the south side, the holidays let us back there and. And kind of investigated for ourselves what's out there, um. So what we what we found is a lot of hazardous. Trees, Chaz can can speak to this uh more eloquently and more informed, uh, he's educated in this field. Uh, but there's a lot of dead and dying trees, uh, which the reduced flow isn't gonna help. It's not gonna help those trees be any healthier, um, I think. Understanding what needs to come out and what should come out and what it's replaced with is important for this discussion. The. The trees themselves, as you can see from from these example photos, aren't great. Um. The proposal itself.
Sorry, can I ask Chaz a question about that?
Yeah, of course.
So which species are we talking about that are invasive?
Yeah, so there's, there's only really four different species down there. Take over the whole landscape, Russian olive is one of them. Siberian elm and the misnomer, uh, that's Chinese elm, you know, everybody calls it a Chinese elm, it's actually Siberian elm, but. Same tree, it's the one that everybody's talking about that has weak branch and structure and um. Loses limbs a lot, and then there's narrowleaf cottonwood and blackwood. None of which are native, none of which are really adaptive species.
The cottonwoods are native.
Yeah, I that I think, I think there's gonna be, uh, again, public confusion about that if. If we're not specifying the difference between a cottonwood and Russian olive.
Sure.
Anyway.
Sure, but, um. Yeah, any of these trees are not desirable, whether or not they're. Uh, native, I guess, doesn't make it a good tree. Um, one of the only trees that we had ever had in the city come over in one piece and actually kill people. Was an early cotton. South Lakehead, um, so that doesn't make it a good tree, even though it could be considered native because there were a few along the riverbanks like this.
Well.
But um, doesn't make it something that I'd want in my backyard or or anywhere near somewhere beautiful space.
No, but a a cottonwood tree. Is for these riparian environments, it's native to that environment, it's appropriate there, it would not be appropriate at a park strip. Or planted in other places in the city, but this is its native environment.
Okay, so is that the south side of that riverbank is not being developed ever? Or is it gonna be somewhere where there's like?
Well, I I'm just just feeding your characters or characterization of the tree itself.
The issue is, the issue is that those cottonwoods that we're hearing a lot about from the public. Line the trail on the north side and they're somewhat on the south side, they are. Deeply treasured by the people who walk there because they provide so much shade, they're they're beautiful. They are native species. I agree that the invasive species that we're talking about are are less desirable there, but I I think we have to be really careful. To make that distinction to the public because. Um. If we're saying we're, we want to allow something like this, but we're gonna make sure that the trees. Um, are that the damage or the change to the trees is is desirable for ecological. And public health reasons or public safety reasons. Um, that's fine, but I think if if we don't specify that we're not interested in. Preserving the aesthetic qualities of that trail which are provided by the cottonwoods, I think we're gonna have even more outcry than we're already getting.
If I might.
And and let me, let me just finish this thought, I mean, I do think there's probably um a difference between a cottonwood that's aging and and. Looking like it may actually. Create some public safety issue than uh than any uh Russian olive that should be taken out. And and Siberian elm or Chinese elm taken out immediately, I agree with that, but I think if. If we're saying we are treating the cottonwoods as the same as all those other species, I think, I think we're. We're inviting, yeah.
Yeah, that's true, um, yeah, this was left to be a. We're not putting any sort of development. See that? Uh, we do have a lot of trouble with these sorts of trees, I actually was. I cut down an eighty foot um elm today that was hanging over somebody's backyard. You know, something that after development, people thought, well. Maybe I don't want this tree here anymore because it's dropping, jumping a lot of forest limbs on their on their lawn and stuff like that. And not only is it, um, Siberian elm, but it is the cotton. Causing a mess along these little developed areas, so. Um. Yeah, I, if it's left alone, we really guess it would fly, but. If we're gonna develop it in any sort of way, I think it's for public health reasons, maybe.
You think all of them need to go?
Everything on the south side was, there was one or two that were kind of stately and healthy, but I thought maybe we can put it. Uh, temporary uh tree protection zone around while developing, but most of them were half dead, most of them were. And and if we're gonna cut this. Water down even further than it is now, all those trees, every deciduous tree has a root system at least. Three times the size of a canopy, and that would run clear into that ditch. Um, and if we take all that water away, they're only going to decline from here.
Yeah, so healthy thinning makes good sense, taking out. The Russian olives, Siberian elms. Probably most of the cottonwoods, but leaving the the healthy ones. And since this will be within that buffer zone, it's. It's not right next to buildings or structures or anything where the trees would present a hazard.
Well, I think, I think what Chaz is speaking to is the safety, right? Uh, because the plan has a public access. Easement trail along that corridor. We need to be concerned about the safety and the health of these trees. Um, to quote, I mean, the the rivers and lake shores plan, which we were part of. Talks about that, that exact practice of. Controlling invasive species, promoting the healthy growth of native plants, removing hazardous or dead trees around the lake and river trail.
I I'm totally in favor of that, I want to be clear, I just think that that's too. That's too vague or too over generalized, call all those trees invasive.
No, that was just mine, that's that was my misnomer.
I'm not a botanist by training, but I have spent a lot of time reading about botany, and I know that's actually. Factually incorrect to call a cottonwood an invasive species, so.
Well, even so, when I went down there with. Gosh, with the Delta people. They were telling me that that's the reason why that section of the river is so junky. Is because the trees are just falling. They're just falling right into the river.
I'm not arguing.
And they're gonna have to do a cleanup here.
I'm not arguing that, I I made that clear, I'm not arguing with that. My my point is, and there are a lot of people who know what they're dealing with when it comes to this area, if we. Don't specify what Rachel just said, that we're we're. We're looking into improving that area, we will be replanting, we'll be getting getting rid of exotic. Species and invasive species, and we will try to preserve as much of the cottonwoods as is desirable, I think that's the right message, I just think that sentence doesn't cover all that.
That's on me, that's that's nothing to do with Travis, that's that's my wording that I put in the presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Eric. All right, uh, so talking about the actual post-development. Um, I think one thing that that is missed in this is we have standards, we have code requirements in the zone. That on a thirty-eight acre plan, which this is a thirty-eight acre plan, if we go to the next slide here. Yeah, so you've rezoned the first twenty-five acres. Um, in that rezone. You've got, you've got two thirds of that public improvement, that public asset access trial and amenities. Secured in a development agreement. This last third, this thirteen acre piece is just to finish that off. So within that that thirty-eight acre area for improvement. The coder would require five hundred seventy treats. So yes, you're, you may be losing trees that are beloved to a certain group of people. But you're replacing that four or five times. Over, right? So I think that's an important point that needs to be expressed, I'll I'll repeat that part of it tonight, because that is an important part of this. Development is how much we're actually getting. On top of the public access that we've been beginning on property that we've never had access to. We're getting hundreds and hundreds of trees planted in this.
So, Aaron, it's. It does that development agreement apply to this other parcel?
So that development agreement applies to the first twenty-five acres, it's copied, we have a draft. Copied same language for this thirteen acre piece.
And and combined, then that would be five hundred and seventy trees.
Right.
That's in code. That's in court, that's not, not, not an agreement, that's in code, oh, okay.
Yeah, the actual amenities are in the development agreement, the the tree count is gonna have to come, no matter if there's development grammar or not.
Or not, okay, thank you.
Um, speaking more of the development itself. Um. This rezone request was approved in twenty twenty-three. On this property for this exact zone. The only reason it is back to you now is because that. Developer didn't sign the development agreement.
Is he what?
They didn't sign the development agreement to lock in the zone change. So I think the main question to ask ourselves in tonight's meeting is is what has changed from a year ago to today? Um, if we thought it was appropriate zoning for the property a year ago. Why wouldn't we today?
And when that was passed in twenty twenty-three, was that both parcels or just the parcel that we're addressing?
Um, it was, it was both parcels, so the the thirteen acres or eleven acres at the time on the east side. Um, it was it was both parcels, so the the thirteen acres or eleven acres at the time on the east side. Was was proposed go to airport industrial, very similar concept plan tied to it. So.
So if does that mean that if we agreed to this and we came up with a development agreement? That the development agreement would apply to the entire property?
So the development agreement already applies to these twenty five acres.
You're saying the east, I'm sorry, you you said the east side didn't get signed.
Right.
Okay, so it's just okay.
It was it was run by two different owners at the time, two different developers.
And Brian nodded his head no, that any agreement tonight would not apply to the other.
So the agreement tonight would tie the tie into what you're saying here. So that's these improvements that they're being proffered with this rezone would tie into this. It's like having a dead end trail here that doesn't connect under this tunnel over to Ford River subdivision. That would just die right there.
It would tie into it, but there's no way for us to retroactively require whatever we said has to happen. On this right side would also happen on the left side.
Right, if you wanted to add more ideas to this reasonable request tonight. You're you're right, that wouldn't retroactively apply to the twenty five acres.
Brian, is it within uh the appropriate way of just talking about development agreements? Uh if we felt that we would prefer a development agreement that did actually agree to conformity. To both sides, I mean, I just. I've I have regrets that the what we approved on the west side was not as. Um, clear in writing about what we wanted along the riverfront, and if we were to make that more clear on the right side. Now, um we could end up with a a weird. Incongruous uh riverfront, but if we if we stipulated that we want. Uniformity across the whole riverfront, like for example, if we change the easements or we said. Put in language about trees and other kinds of things uh that aren't in the pre earlier development agreement. How do we, how do we know that we end don't end up with two weird um. Uh sides of the same development.
Additional consideration.
You probably don't, uh I I think that you could. Express your. Desire for uniformity, um recognizing that. That's up to the developer address.
Or my desire not to support it because I don't have a guarantee of it?
Well, but I think you're, I think you're.
Or can I rephrase that, that I I don't support it because I don't um like that it won't be the same.
But he already have, but they already have, the 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 property alongside already has a vested right. To develop according to the terms of development, so to say. I'm not inclined to support this one. Nah, I I think you're starting very dangerous ground there.
Okay.
And I actually think we did a really good job on the last one, I think the concessions and the improvements and everything that were proffered. Are good and make this a really good project, so I'm comfortable having those same. Uh agreements in in this new development agreement so that we have uniformity between these two properties. I don't feel the need to have additional. Conditions that I would want to retroactively oppose to the other one, I I think we did a good job.
Counselor McFay.
I think we did a good job, I do think though that we do need. A set standard for along the river, I think there should be the easement standard, tree standard, and I think we should have a design standard. Like when I lived in Washington, you know, we had a wirehauser was cutting down the trees in the state, but they had beautiful buildings that matched nature, right? Like do something, don't have a white stucco building out there at the, it's a big block, like do something with natural materials and. Natural colors that isn't the eyesore that the people walking the trailer terrified of. So I think that there's simple things we could do to create sign standards, ease set easements and trees.
I completely agree, um but I don't think that we should try to create those new standards and apply them to this particular parcel. I think they could give a bit more.
So the the buffer of the easement that applies to this is the forty foot buffer where they can't have parking stalls or buildings, they they have respected that on this plan.
Does that also mean asphalt, Aaron?
It doesn't.
It does not.
No, you just can't have parking stalls.
Asphalt ten feet from.
And they do get pretty close there, they do get pretty close on the corner and. So I think that's where we can, I think we can, we can do more right there.
Yeah, I think we can do better with that.
So you're saying forty five is standard within our rules?
Yeah, the this current city code, it's a forty foot buffer from the river edge to any parking stalls or buildings.
See, I think we need to expand that to asphalt too, like not just.
I agree.
But that might prevent you from having nice asphalt trails along.
No, the trail's great, that that would be an exemption. We're talking.
So we we have to be careful how we worded that.
Yeah, typically you were, no parking lot, no turnaround, no.
So George, when you worked on the river, was there a standard buffer zone?
I thought there was, but Bill, do you or Aaron, do you remember?
Yeah, there's so there's a there's a standard floodplain of a hundred, but for project plans, it can go down to forty.
Maybe that wasn't enough. I don't know.
What are you thinking, that should be increased from forty?
Weren't we looking, uh Justin, were you tinkering with the map to show what hundred feet looked like, I can't remember. Is that what you we were doing in that?
I mean, if that's the forty, that's that's probably more than.
Yeah, it's like the best use of the screen.
It's also a slasher.
So that does create a lot of problems for them. And is the tunnel of love, is that underneath the?
So yeah, so that that tunnel, that's that's the connection that that's existing, that engineering built into the bridge.
That connects, so Provo Ford River subdivision. Provo Ford River subdivision has in their development agreement, uh a couple guys to see something with the trails that could connect to this.
Yeah, if it's brick, yeah.
Okay, Aaron, continue with your presentation.
That's all I've got for now, so I'll have more to manage, but. Okay, any questions?
Counselor Bogdan.
Okay, so one thing that I've heard a lot. And I think it's especially touchy since how this Smith's property is going to apartments. Is the need and the desire for some kind of commercial, whatever that is on the west side. Especially where this is really close to the high school. And so one of the desires, this some of the west siders have said is that, hey, this would be a great location for. Something other than a warehouse, something that could benefit the high school, gas station, I don't know, whatever those other uses within the. Airport industrial zone are. Um, and especially where in the Lady South neighborhood. And I do realize the Broadview Shores does have a little bit of a commercial, what is it fifteen acres, that they have a little bit of a commercial note for. Yeah, we don't have any. Residential commercial notes for Lady South. And some of those things are desired, and they thought this would be a better location for it. I think with the master plan of the airport going forward, I think it would be a great time to. Look at the airport industrial zone and see how that can fit in there. Maybe put a little power, right now all I'm seeing is warehouses coming through, I'm not seeing restaurants and some of these other things that we had envisioned. In the airport industrial zone, and I'd hate for every great piece of land to be jumped on as a warehouse. And have nothing left for a hotel or a restaurant or a gas station. Or some of those other needs that the west side really needs, especially with losing such a big parcel of our commercial spot.
Some of which fit into the airport's uh industrial zone.
Well, yeah, there's other uses besides warehouses in the airport industrial zone, right?
So, I mean. Like you said, there are permitted uses in the zone, um that's that's most that we can think to do to to allow it, to promote it, um. But we have to react to the proposals we get, right?
Right, and so I don't know, maybe it's, maybe it's a good thing to just take it out for a while or to reimagine it or to rethink it or. I just, I just hate to have everybody jump on the warehouse wagon. And we have an airport going from five five gates to ten gates, we have a sports park up in that. And I think if we give it some time, we'll get some of those economic development things. I just would hate to have an airport industrial zone just chucked full of warehouses.
Counselor Hamlin.
Um, well, I had a separate question, so I don't know if you were gonna address that.
I was gonna just the commercial issue, so you remember that the frontage of the property. Geneva Center is neighbor commercial, we're working with developers on that now. There's another commercial supposedly at the water development on that. Um, you also know that you resumed the south five acres of the sports park for commercial development. We put an RFP out on that and got no responses. We think, we hope that was a mistake, so we're gonna do the RFP again, because we've had commercial interest. Commercial development, which is the most than that piece, so if planning is trying to encourage commercial. Rebuild commercial uses, restaurants, hotels, those kinds of things where we can. Um, but there's also much we can do, we have to wait for the market to make it some better.
Uh well, my question is about another issue that's been brought up, um and I it it may be premature uh to know. But the um diesel truck, diesel trucks in a warehouse, um do do we have any? Uh I mean, though, obviously, if we were to develop that into a bunch of houses, there would be an issue with traffic and air quality as well, but diesel trucks have. Special air pollution challenges for immediate neighbors, and if we're talking. Hundreds of diesel trucks come uh trips coming in every day, uh I don't know, what's that?
Yeah, people are saying hundreds of diesel trips a day, and they're saying there's like eighty docks, I'm like, hey.
Well, I think it was based on, I I don't think it, I mean, we don't have, the thing is, we don't have the data, so I I'm just wondering, what what do we know at this point? Would be, because that to me feels like a very important issue to uh to know ahead of time. Um, that I again, didn't think maybe uh when we were discussing the left side of this, I don't recall that we had that conversation.
I think the nice thing about the trucks, um I don't know if it's ever gonna get to that number, but the nice thing about the the truck flow with this use. Is it's it's gonna be the opposite of the flow of the residential neighborhood, right? So as as residents are headed east in the morning to go to work. That's when trucks will be headed west, so it's gonna be the inverse of the residential traffic. So it's not gonna pose as much traffic concerns as one would think, just because of the timing and the flow of that that use.
But it's still, it still would be an air pollution issue for the immediate area, right? So, but do we have any idea what kind of volume this developer has in mind?
I don't, the advocate might, uh I see him sitting in the back, or you can ask him now, you can ask him later tonight, okay.
Are there eighty docks?
Uh I haven't counted them, I'd be surprised if there are eighty docks. That seems a bit high to me.
I don't, I can't imagine hundreds a day, like it's just like this is bombastic.
And you're quoting data from Los Angeles, yeah.
Well, it's I don't think it's that hard, I mean, a house, a household for kids generates like twenty five car trips a day, so. You have warehouses with, you know, a fleet of forty trucks, they could be coming in and out, who knows, I just don't know.
I don't know, yeah, I am interested in that.
Orange building in the middle is three hundred thousand square feet, it's gonna have six docks in the upper left hand corner, so the north west corner will be six docks right there. This is just a concept. You bring the range from an architect normally disperses a whole bunch of docks in, and then the particular tenant is gonna have six docks. On the southeast, so it would be twelve.
At the middle dock.
Twelve docks of the three hundred thousand square foot, so that's a very, very small, small amount of use. The other building on the right, which is a hundred thousand square feet, you can see that there are there are many docks, but those bays will be leased to tenants. They probably leaves between seven thousand to fifteen thousand square feet, and so the use for them. Is very minimal traffic, but it would be the dock and then the driving, the driving and dock that goes there. And then building to the to the west. Be the same tenant as the building in the middle, and so those docks will be reduced as well, so. And then, yeah.
Eric Jurgensen.
Eric Jurgensen.
Um, I think very similar things have been built down on six fifty South Lakeview Parkway. Um, these kind of flex industrial warehouse spaces with with docks, um. So it it'd be interesting to see how much traffic that those have generated.
Well, how many docks do they have over there?
Um, I'd have to count them out. I don't know.
I think it'd be a great comparison if we had something like that, and most of these trucks are taking the Parkway, right?
That's that's the primary focus, right, that's why the Parkway has that quick. That's the idea of of getting the truck traffic down that road instead of center street.
I mean, we can't mandate where it goes, but.
Right, but it seems like.
It's a better rare, and a better intersection.
Right.
I don't know if it's a better intersection, but it's a better route.
Well, thank you, Aaron, we'll look forward to additional discussion and clarification tonight, and appreciate your helpful. Background and information here this afternoon, thank you. Our final item for the um work session is uh number twelve, the Anordinance Amending Provo City Code to Add Data Centers. As a permitted use in airport zones, this will be presented by Nancy Robinson, one of our planners, hello Nancy.
Hi, okay, so I know I have listened to all the previous discussion that you've had, I'll just um give you a little bit of update on. Uh the history, so Planning Commission heard a report on February twenty sixth of this year. About it, um we uh. They had questions mainly about the power structure of the um. A data center and um it passed, well, they they said to recommend approval. On a vote of four to three from the Planning Commission, with the conditions of the approval was um all issues regarding emissions. And low water usage be addressed, sufficient utility infrastructure, uh the amount of water being used. And that the city would have a say on a fuel source in powering the in a station. Uh since that time, um because of these discussions that have gone on with um. Uh power and public works and development services, um we have changed our. Um recommendation for staff to uh not recommend approval for it. Just because we realize the data centers are unlike any other industrial use. And that we also didn't realize how many zones that it was already a permitted uh use in that comprises about three thousand acres. And since these other zones have better infrastructure than the airport industrial zone. We felt that there wasn't a need to open another zone to the data center, so. That in addition to, we would also recommend bringing back that to the recommendation on which zones are questionable. To allow them, for example, right now it is um allowed in residential conservation, but that should probably look at. To maybe not allow, and that's what I've got.
Great, thank you, Nancy, any questions for Nancy?
So does this mean uh we will not be voting on this at tonight's meeting, I can't remember if this.
I think we do, I think we do vote on it.
But your recommendation is is?
No.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you, Nancy. All right, if there is no objection, we'll now adjourn the municipal council work session by unanimous.
Recording stopped.